This is Sarah Bernou. I can go ahead and do a quick roll call just to see if we have quorum, and then we can get started if we do.
That's fine.
Okay, Commissioner Garcia.
Hi, good evening. I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner Fan.
Here.
Commissioner Rivera.
Here.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Here.
And Chair McLaughlin.
Here.
We do have a quorum here.
All right, terrific. Then why don't we get started here since we have a reasonably long meeting it looks like. So Madam Secretary, can you start the recording of this meeting?
Yes, meeting is being recorded.
Okay. I would like to call this regular planning commission meeting of November 9, 2020 to order. Ally, can you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Certainly. Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands.
Which stands one nation, indivisible.
Indivisible.
And justice for all. Thank you, Ally. Madam Secretary, we will forego the call roll for the attendees because we've already done that.
Sure.
We'll just go on to the next item, and I'd like to invite you to describe the way the public will access this virtual meeting.
Thank you, Chair. This meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube at www.youtube.com/cityofsantaana-video/live and to our website at www.santa-anna.org/CC/city-meetings. While the meeting is in progress, the public may provide a comment by phone. To comment by phone, please dial 1-669-900-9128, enter meeting ID 315-965-149, followed by pound. When prompted for a participant ID, just enter pound. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, please dial star nine. When the comment period is open, I will call on you by the last three numbers listed on the caller ID. After you are called upon, you must press star six to unmute yourself. After you have unmuted yourself, please state your name, your position on the matter, and your comment. You will have three minutes. I will alert you when your time is up. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We'll move on to public comments on non-agenda items. Madam Secretary, does anyone wish to speak at this point in time with respect to non-agenda items?
If you'd like to comment on a non-agenda item, please dial star nine now. No callers, Chair.
Okay. With respect to no callers, then we will close the public comments on non-agenda items, and we'll move to the consent calendar. I'd like to have a move, I'd like to move that we accept the minutes from the last planning commission, regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. Can we have a motion second? That's Ken Nguyen. Ken Nguyen is the motion, second.
Commissioner Rivera.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Rivera is second. Madam Secretary, would you do a roll call on the vote?
Yes, roll call vote. Commissioner Garcia.
Madam Secretary, would you do a roll call on the vote for the minutes of the previous planning commission meeting?
Yes, roll call vote. Commissioner Garcia.
Sarah.
Are you there? They cannot. Chair, can you hear me?
Have we lost you, Sarah?
No, I'm here. One, can someone else speak, please?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Ally?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, this is Vince Fregoso. Can you hear me?
Hello?
I can hear you, Mark.
Thanks, Tom.
Just one second.
I didn't know you were not.
I'm not alone. I got Tom with me.
You're alone.
Commissioner Rivera.
Can any of the commissioners hear staff? Any commissioner hear staff?
We can hear you, Ally.
Yeah.
We heard Ally, we heard Min.
Are we good? Can you, Chair, can you hear me now?
Sarah, okay, you're back.
Okay, good. I'm sorry about that. We had a technical difficulty, but we're back. So I'm going to proceed with the roll call vote for the minutes of October 26. Commissioner Garcia.
I will abstain since I was not present.
Thank you. Commissioner Morrissey.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here, aye.
Commissioner Fan.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Aye.
And Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Motion passes with Commissioner Garcia abstaining.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Secretary. At this point in time, that'll end our consent calendar. We're going to move on to the business calendar, public hearings. I'm going to review public hearing protocol. First of all, this is the process for the public hearing so that everyone knows what to expect. Staff will present a, will provide a presentation and answer questions from the commission. The public hearing will then be opened. The applicant will be given an opportunity to speak, limited to 15 minutes. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment, limited to three minutes. The applicant will be given an opportunity to respond to the comments made by the public, limited to five minutes. The public hearing will then be closed. Discussion will return to the commission with formal action taken to approve, conditionally approved, denied, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. Please state your name and address. Please state whether or not you support or oppose or are neutral on the proposal. Your statement should include all pertinent facts within your, within your knowledge. Avoid gossip, emotion, repetition, and a clear and concise, non-repetitive argument is most effective. I would like to, I would like to pull item three to the beginning of the calendar, and we're going to start with item three. So this is the time and place. The item, item three, conditional use permit number 2020-19 and variance number 2020-04 for the property located at 411 South Main Street. Staff has requested this matter be continued to the next meeting on December 14, 2020. Do I have a motion to continue this item to December 14, 2020?
So moved.
So moved.
Tom is the, Tom is the motion. Second is Ken Nguyen.
Ken Nguyen, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, will you do a roll call?
Yes, roll call vote for item number three. Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Morrissey.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Commissioner Fan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Aye.
Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Motion passes by unanimous consent.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Now we'll move on. This is the time and place to consider item number one, site plan review for 2020-04 with the property located 1801 East Fourth Street. Please note that decision on this matter is final unless appealed within 10 days of any interested individual or party. Before we begin, do any of the commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regards to this item?
Commissioner Fan, to reiterate myself on this, as my employer has been on, and they have been, the applicant is a longstanding client of my employer, is a property owner. So I will remove myself from the room, and someone let me know when to come back in. Thank you.
Okay, so you are removing yourself from the room. Any other commissioner have anything that they would like to wish to disclose at this point in time? I'll go down the list. Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Morrissey?
I have nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Nothing disclosed.
Commissioner Rivera?
Nothing to disclose of them.
Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
I have nothing to disclose.
Can I have nothing disclosed at this point in time? So we will go ahead, and Selena, you'll be presenting to us.
Yes, good evening, Chair. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great, thank you.
There's some ringing in, there's some ringing in the background.
Yes, I heard that as well. Hopefully everyone has their phones muted to the time being.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair McLaughlin, members of the planning commission. This is Selena Kelleher, Associate Planner with City of Santa Ana. The project before you tonight is the Central Point Mixed Use Development Project and Site Plan Review Application Number 2020-04. Next slide, please. The project is located at 1801 East Fourth Street. It has a general plan land use designation of district center and zoning of professional and administrative office with the Metro East Mixed Use Active Overlay District. It is shown on the screen in red. It's an eight-acre site currently vacant, surrounded by office users. Next slide, please. You'll just see some images of the largely vacant site. Next slide. Now I'll provide an overview of the project. The project includes construction of 644 multifamily residential units within two buildings. It'll consist of a mix of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms, and also includes 15,000 square feet of commercial space within the two buildings along Fourth Street. The total number of parking spaces for the project includes 1,318 parking spaces, which exceeds standards of the Metro East Overlay, and it includes amenities that are typical of multifamily, high-end apartment projects. Next slide, please. The building will be, the development will be constructed within two buildings. You can on the screen, you'll see Building A, which is the larger building. It includes 325 units and nine thousand, approximately 9,000 square feet of commercial space. And Building C, which includes 319 units and 5,000, approximately 5,000 square feet of commercial space. Access to and from the development is provided from Park Court Place to the north and Fourth Street to the south. You'll enter the project driveways and then enter into centrally located parking structures within each building. Mostly the residential buildings wrap around essentially located parking structures. It has individual courtyards along with rooftops, open space, including fitness, classrooms, and a pool. Next slide, please. On the following slide, I'll go into some of the publicly accessible open space areas. These areas are shown in pink, they show you pink, and starting from the west side of the development going east, you'll see the approximately 31,000 square foot linear park, which lies to the west side of the development. This is intended to serve as an extension of the walking path located to the north of the project site along Mayberry Street and adjacent to Mayberry Park. It will serve as a connection between those areas, this project site, and the Metro East office and residential buildings to the south. In the center of the site, you'll see a 15,000 square foot centrally located great lawn. It will be programmed with a spruce tree implanting, lawn area, lawn games, covered pavilion, seating, and fire pits. At the corner of Fourth and Cabrillo Park Drive, its plaza is adjacent to the commercial square footage. It will include decorative hard seats, decorative lighting, pottery, lantern sheathing, seating, and umbrellas, and then also pocket parks on Cabrillo Park Drive, which will help activate the street and create a both physical and visual link to and from Cabrillo Park to the north. In response to the comments received at the work study session, a condition of approval number 11 requires a minimum of a 48-inch box tree and 10-foot ground trunk height for palm trees, with the goal of providing lush lantern sheathing for the project. Next slide, please. The project includes 15,130 square feet of commercial space along Fourth Street, which makes up 2.6% of the overall development square footage, along with 30 parking spaces in excess of the Metro East standards that could be utilized for the commercial tenants. These stalls are depicted on the screen. You can see here the 18 surface-level stalls located just off Fourth Street and 12 spaces that would be within the adjacent parking structure. The market and fiscal analysis was prepared by the Concord Group and RSG and peer reviewed by the city consultant AECOM. This study and the consultants concluded that, that the site could support anywhere between 10,000 to 20,000 square feet of commercial space, that the proposed percentage of commercial, commercial square footage is similar to the percentage of the square footage of other mixed-use projects in the area, such as Ewan, Madison, and AMG First Point, which provides between a rate of 1 to 3.5% of the total development square footage. In response to the comments received at the work study session, the Concord Group and the applicant prepared a subsequent analysis on the feasibility of the neighborhood market. And they found that although the project site has good visibility, it does not have enough rooftops and income levels to attract a grocery operator. It also does not have convenient parking to support operations. Grocery operators require surface-level parking and will only consider parking structures in the most dense environment, such as downtown LA or Santa Monica. And a large surface-level parking lot is contrary to the goals of the Metro East Mixed Use Overlay. Next slide, please. Next slide will be a rendering of the proposed development. The contemporary design will be comprised of a variety of, of long-lasting materials, such as metal siding, stone veneer, simulated wood siding, fiber cement lap siding, fiber cement panels, stucco, metal and glass railings, and aluminum storefronts. Next slide, please. Here you'll see some additional renderings of the project, the multifamily buildings. I just want to also note that the project will comply with cowl green, which will include electrical vehicle charging stations, full roofing, highly-rated insulation, low or no VOC paint, renewable carbon-absorbing framing or wood material, dual-blazed windows, energy-efficient lighting and appliances, and low, low plumbing fixtures, and drought-tolerant plants and water-permeable surfaces. Next slide. Within this slide, you'll see some renderings of specifically the publicly accessible open space areas, with the great lawn, the pocket parks, and the linear parks. Next slide, please. And projects that are going to exercise the development options under the Metro East Overlay Zone require a site plan review application to be reviewed and approved by the planning commission, and four specific findings must be made. With that, the project will activate a vacant and underutilized eight-acre site and will create a mixed-use development close to office buildings, Cabrillo Park, Mayberry Park, and downtown Santa Ana, providing opportunities for live, work, and play. Project is also consistent with the development standards of the Metro East regarding land use, the number of stories, minimum development site area, building frontages and open space, setbacks, parking, and access standards. The project is also in scale with the nearby buildings, which include office uses that range anywhere from two to eight stories, and it'll create an interface with I5 freeway. It also meets the design principles within the Metro East Mixed Use Overlay by providing high-quality materials, and the design and architecture was also peer reviewed by the city's environmental consultant, I mean architectural consultant, John Coliskey. And lastly, the project has been designed to ensure compatibility between the mix of uses, which include residential and non-residential use. Next slide, please. In regards to CEQA, the 2007 MIMU EIR and the 2018 Subsequent EIR anticipated potential development of 5,551 residential units, 963,000 square feet of commercial development. The MIMU overlay zone is a land use plan that guides the physical development within the boundaries of the overlay zone, and the overlay zone was analyzed at a program level and evaluated the effects of the implementation of the entire overlay zone. The Central Point Project was evaluated under CEQA Guideline Section 15162 and 15168. Per CEQA Guideline Section 15168, city has determined that the Central Point Project is within the scope of the program EIR as it meets the allowable land uses, density, and building intensity of the Metro East Mixed Use Overlay, and is covered by the existing infrastructure as described in the program's EIR. In addition, per CEQA Guideline Section 15162, when a certified EIR has been adopted for a project, no subsequent EIR shall be prepared. The city has determined that there is no substantial evidence that there are substantial changes in the project, that there's no substantial changes in the circumstances that have occurred, and there's no new information of substantial importance related to the project. The applicant has also prepared two technical studies, human health risk assessment, and traffic impact analysis, which were attached as items to the staff report, and they will be implementing a series of traffic improvements related to the project's traffic. Next slide, please. And also just a reminder that on October 12, there was a planning commission work study session regarding the project, and the comments raised at that meeting were brought up throughout my presentation, and then specifically on page 1.4, 1-4 of the staff report. Next slide, please. And that concludes the staff's presentation for tonight, with a recommendation to approve site plan review number 2020-04 as condition. If that's available for any questions.
Thank you, Selena. Do any of the commissioners have any questions of Selena? I'll start with Commissioner Garcia.
None right now, thank you.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Yes, I have a question. Sorry, my slideshow was running behind, so I might have missed it. Was, is there, are there any mitigation devices or methods in place for the, the air conditioning systems to deal with any pollution from the freeway?
Yes, so a human health risk assessment was conducted, and that concluded in the task report by Urban Frost Rose. Their consultant should also be on the line. But with that analysis, it found that there would be no impact with the implementation of air quality improvements for the air conditioning to the residents from the freeway. So no impact from the freeway to the residents.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes, I do have a question. I noticed that the project would have 39 studios, 226 one-bedroom, 248 units, a two-bedroom, and 31 units of three-bedroom. The total going to have is 1,300 parking spaces to provide. My question is, how of this parking spaces would divide among, you know, are the 644 units in the project?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, so the project is a ratio of 2.0 parking spaces per unit, and also as part of the site planning review, it's a condition of approval, I can get the number in just a moment, that the applicant submit a parking management plan. It's condition number 13 to help allocate, you know, which units in regards to the number of bedrooms would get however many number of spaces. And so that would be submitted to sit or reveal prior to permit issuing.
And my next question is the, is the, my next question is the parking spaces for the residential unit and the commercial development. Is there a mix of shared parking space of any way?
Thank you. So the Metro East Overlay does not require separate commercial parking for development with this range of commercial and residential square footage. However, on, on one of those slides, I did indicate that there are 18 surface-level parking spaces that through the parking management plan could be allocated to the commercial, commercial tenants, and then there would be an additional parking, 12 spaces in the parking structure for the commercial tenants. Again, also, the parking management plan would have to designate which stalls specifically and who, you know, which, if it's resident or commercial, that would be some.
Okay. And then my last question is the commercial parking ratio, is that met the city requirement or?
So there is no, there is no requirement for commercial parking for the projects in the Metro East of this size. So they do meet the requirement. I can say that the ratio is similar to those that are of other mixed-use areas, such as the transit zoning code and harbor mixed-use specific plans. So is that a rate of one space for every 500 square feet?
Wow, okay. All right, thank you so much. Let's be on.
Thank you. Commissioner Rivera?
No, no questions or comments at this time.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Selena, I'm just going to go back and just kind of get some more clarification on the parking. Again, looking at the building structure and everything else as to how many units, it appears that there's just as many studios as there are three bedrooms, roughly. The fact is, do the three bedrooms get three cars parking, and the studios get one car parking, or is it average of two for any unit?
The code requirement is two per unit. So our code does not specify by bedroom. It's by unit. The parking management plan, however, can help us allocate or to have, you know, the units with more bedrooms if needed, have more parking.
So has the parking management plan been developed at this point in time, or is that still in the making?
That is still in the making, and I misspoke earlier when I said that would be submitted prior to permit issuing. It is that it would be submitted or finalized prior to certificate occupancy, so, or any building permit, so before any tenant would occupy the space.
So we're not going to know, we're not going to have a, we're not going to have a parking management plan until such time that the developer is ready to open up and lease the units?
Correct.
Why is that?
Well, by code, they meet the number of required parking spaces. This is just an additional measure to help us manage parking. They can submit this plan at any point in time prior to building permit issuing or, or during building plan check.
Okay. All right, well, got it. All right. Any other questions of Selena at this point in time, or any staff member at this point in time?
I have one, one question.
Okay, go ahead. Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you. Selena, this is something I did not raise admittedly at our study session earlier this year or last month, but I'm looking at slide number six of your presentation, and what's glaring, you know, at me is that, you know, we have the rooftop amenities, but then there's a lot of rooftop space that's just, you know, bare concrete rooftops. And I'm wondering if we explored at all any kind of, you know, rooftop gardens or greenery that would help both, I think, from an environmental standpoint and to like an aesthetic standpoint as well with the applicant. as well with the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. We have not specifically discussed rooftop gardens with the applicant. I'm sure they would be happy to comment on your questions during their portion of the session. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Morrissey, any other questions of staff?
No further questions. I want to comment, I think they did a great job of addressing our comments from last meeting. I appreciate that.
Okay. Good. Commissioner Nguyen.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera.
No questions, thanks.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
No questions, thank you.
Okay. All right, Selena, we have no questions of you and staff at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point in time, Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this project?
Yes, there were a total of five comments received for this item. There were a couple in opposition, a couple general comments to the project, and one comment in support, and all of those comments have been posted to the city's website.
Okay, thank you. So we had two in opposition, one approved.
Yeah, and I keep to clarify that the one.
And two.
Right, so there was.
Go ahead.
Two general comments made to the project itself. There was one comment in support, and there were two written comments submitted in opposition, but I wanted to clarify that, that those comments were from the same person.
Okay. All right. Appreciate that clarification. Okay, at this point in time, we will now open the public hearing on this item. Would the applicant like to speak on this matter?
Yes, Chair, this is Sean Rossen. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, Chairman Gofflin and planning commissioners. On behalf of Waterford Property Company and Arnel and affiliate, my name is Sean Rossen, co-founder of Waterford Property Company. I'm excited to present Central Point, an iconic mixed-use project. Central Point is a 644-unit Class A multifamily community with a focus on modernism and technology. The project is a contemporary design inspired by the highest-quality projects in the country with a focus on architectural variety, sophisticated massing and articulation, active ground floor views, community connectivity, green principles, and active trails and open space. In addition to the project's high amenities, large roof deck, Central Point's central feature is its central park located in the middle of the community, and its walking trails on the western edge of the project. Central Point will be a community where diversity, creativity, technology, and socializing will be encouraged. The project's target demographics will be young professionals, students, empty nesters, and residents looking for an active lifestyle that is close to the major employment nodes of Orange County and public transportation. At that, with that, I will stop there and just say that I thought that city staff did a great job of providing an overview of the project. I think Selena and Vince and the rest of the team have really done a great job, and my hats off to them, and it's been a pleasure working with them. Since the last study session, Chair, you know, we made a point to make sure that we followed up on the open items, which were the discussion about the Cal Green standards, the landscape features, there was a question about open space, and then the retail demand as well. We have our, our project team on this call. We've got our project architect, Keith Labus with KTGI, our project engineer, our landscape architect, and then Mike Reynolds from the Concord Group on this call as well. I know specifically, there's a comment regarding green space on the roof decks. Yes, that, that's something to, to the commissioner's point. There is ample room for additional garden space up on the rooftops, and, and that is definitely something that we can program into the project as well. But, you know, what I wanted to say as well is that, you know, we're really excited about this project. It's been a really long process. It's been 18 months in the making. The project, consistent with the general plan, the zoning, and the Metro East overlay, we believe we meet the intent and the code of that document within the confines of SEQUA, and so we're really excited to be here after a long and, and engaging journey. So with that, I will, I'm happy to answer any questions, and like I said, we've got our project team on this call as well.
Okay, thank you, Sean. We'll start with Commissioner Garcia. Do you have any questions of the applicant?
A comment, thank you. Sean, thank you so much for addressing my question and your comments. I think it's a great opportunity to be a leader in that area of beautifying and making more green space available. I think you are definitely, you'll be very visible for planes coming, flying into Orange County and flying out of Orange County, but I also think it's, you could be a leader in this area by really providing green space in the rooftop, and if we're, I think the city seems to be definitely heading into building up, so I, I thank you for being open to that and hopefully agreeing to really expand that on your rooftops, and I really truly appreciate, I think you've been perhaps the, at least in my time, the past few months, that has really addressed all of our comments when we came back, so I think that's very, we really appreciate that, or I personally appreciate that, so thank you. One last question.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. One last question. I think Selena mentioned in her staff report that the market issue was, one of the reasons why it wouldn't be supported is because of the income level in the area. I know that during the study session, you mentioned that, you know, these types of commercial space is usually leased to, you know, I don't know, cleaners, I think, commercial retailers that really cater to the residents, and so, you know, your, your audience, young professionals, empty nesters, and some, you know, maybe professional or undergrad students, and I'm wondering why, why we don't, why your numbers don't believe that the income level of these sets would support a community market?
Yeah, no, that's, that's a great question. So, and it's not the income level, it, it's the aggregation of rooftops, and I will be the first to tell you, you know, we're multifamily developers, we are not retail developers. But that said, we, we went out and spoke with a number of, you know, retail experts, and as you've seen, you know, there's, there are a number of mixed-use projects, and, and you know, candidly, just down the street from this, you've got the 1901 project, and really, what, what happens is, is that until you get a certain threshold of rooftops in a dense, in a, in a dense enough area, that really becomes the demand drivers, for instance, the Trader Joe's. So I'm, I'm close friends with the Trader Joe's team, and, you know, we, you know, candidly asked them, and I can't remember if Trader Joe's is mentioned in the last public hearing, but, but I know grocery store was, but we asked them, and, and they ran their demographic analysis, and just said that we would need a, an aggregation of, you know, an additional 1,500 units in that, in that area to support the Trader Joe's and call it the Metro East overlay, and it's, and that's consistent with, you know, a lot of mixed-use projects, that you need to continue to build those rooftops. I'll give you an example. Downtown Los Angeles is a perfect example, South Park around Staples Center. They have a recent, they do have a Whole Foods that was built there within the last three years, but it took nearly 3,500 residential units in that area before Whole Foods would commit to signing the lease. So I'm not saying that additional retail is not gonna come, and, you know, candidly, we believe it will, but I, I think what's really exciting about our project is you're gonna get the rooftops needed in the Metro East overlay with this project and futures that I think hopefully the next project or the project behind that, you know, there will be enough demand for, for a large grocery store. So I don't know if I answered your question, but that, that's really the driver, it's just getting enough rooftops in a dense enough location before you can, you have enough demand for, for a grocery store.
No, you did, thank you. That's very helpful.
Anything else, Norma?
Nothing else, thank you.
Let me, let me, I want to piggyback on Norma's comment and, and, and your comment, Sean, and that is, is that, you know, under the MIMU that we had, there were supposed to be 5,551 units. This is not a question for you, this is a question of staff, but at this point in time, we've built a number of facilities under that, under the MIMU, and there's others that are in the process of being done. Selena, do we know how many units are done and/or in process at this point in time that make up that 5,551 units?
Mr. Chairman, Vince Fargoso here. I can tell you that we have one, one project built so far, and that's the 1801 East First Street. It's the 1901, excuse me, First Street. That's 260 units, and then we have almost 1,000 under construction with the two AMG projects.
Right. And then you have Elon, which is right behind it.
Elon is coming up, it went in the plan check last week, that's about 602 units. So we're less than half of where we're at.
Okay, but this would bring in, this would also bring in 650 units, too.
That would put us at about 2,400 units.
Okay, all right, I'm just, just trying to get a feel for where we are with regards to that, because that was the, you know, that was the discussion as to where we were and where we were going with this whole thing. And I know that when we talked about this a couple of years back, obviously, we did have consideration being made for this project at that time, as well as the Bismo project that, that's between the Xerox Tower and the Caltrans Tower. Okay, so that, that answers my question. Thanks. We'll go back to Commissioner Morrissey. Do you have any questions of the applicant at this point in time?
No questions, just a comment. I'd thank them as well for coming in and turning a piece of property that's, that's just been, you know, every time I drive by it, I just wonder what's, when's something gonna happen there, and so finally, we have a really great quality project going in there, so I really appreciate all the efforts and thought that went into making it happen.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Commissioner Nguyen.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera.
No questions, thank you.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
No questions, thank you.
Okay, I have no questions at this point in time myself, so having said that, Madam Secretary, do we have anyone that wants to comment in the public hearing at this point in time?
If you'd like to comment on this item, please dial *9 now. And we do have a few callers, Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Caller with the last.
Okay, go ahead.
8444. Please state your name, your position on the item, and your comment. You will have three minutes, go ahead. Caller with the last.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead, please.
All right, good evening. One, name is Tito Moreno. I'm a, I'm a 21-year-old, longtime resident of Santa Ana, and I just have one comment in regards to this, this project. I'm, I'm neutral in regards to it passing, because obviously, I know it's gonna bring a lot of impact to the density in the area, but with that being the case, though the way the city is going, that's not gonna stop it, really, but my only issue is, so I played many, many baseball practices at Cabrillo Park, but just not too far from, from this, from this property, and I know that the turning lane on 4th Street, turning on North Cabrillo Park, the cars really, really do back up, and they actually back up into the inside lane, basically the lane that, and you're going towards 4th Street, towards Tustin, and so my concern is the fact that this property will have that, will have that effect on 4th Street between, between the exit of the, of the 5 freeway and Cabrillo Park Drive, and I just, I just wanna just state the, that's something that is pretty much obvious to someone who's always driven past this property, like, like the one commissioner has, has stated. I'm happy as well that something's actually being done with this, with the land. It's always been a field of weeds since I've been a kid, and so that's one positive aspect about it, but I know for a fact that the turning lane is going to really back up because everyone's gonna be coming off the 5 freeway, whether it's northbound or southbound, and I know you can enter behind the property as well, towards, more towards 17th, but already now, the turning lane backs up because everyone tries to go from 4th Street to 17th Street because they want to avoid the left ramp, so they consider that street on Cabrillo that is adjacent to the park as a, so that's my only concern. Other than that, I like the site, I like the plan, but I feel the traffic is gonna kill. So, thank you for taking my call, and.
Thank you, Tito.
Anything, just leave.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tito.
Okay, caller with the last three numbers, 4538. Please state your name, your position on the item, and your comment. You have three minutes, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Paige Denny, and I am commenting on behalf of the Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, also known as SAFER, who is in opposition of the project. That contends that the potential environmental effects of the project have been fully addressed by the 2007 Metro East Mixed-Used Overlay Zone EIR and the 2018 Metro East Mixed-Used Overlay District Expansion and Elon Development Project Subsequent EIR, collectively the Metro East EIR. Fundamentally, the proposed project is an entirely different project than what was analyzed in the Metro East EIRs. The Metro East EIR was a programmatic EIR that analyzed the environmental impact of the implementation of the entire overlay zone and only analyzed the Elon project at the project level. It did not evaluate the environmental impact of the development of the proposed project, and the proposed project has never undergone SEQUA review. In fact, the Metro East EIR is explicit that it was prepared in accordance with SEQUA's Program EIR provisions, and that subsequent projects must undergo the tiered review process. As a result, SEQUA requires the city to prepare an initial study to determine if a project may cause significant environmental effects that were not analyzed in the Metro East EIR. Additionally, a tiered EIR is required for the project because it will have environmental impacts that were not analyzed in Metro East EIR. The project may pose significant health risk impact to nearby sensitive receptors. The health, health risk assessment that was prepared for the project failed to quantify the risks posed to people living nearby the project site as a result of the project's construction and operation. Environmental consulting firm SWEAT used project-specific information to estimate these impacts, finding that the excess cancer risk for adults, children, and infants at a sensitive receptor located 125 meters away over the course of project's construction and operation are approximately 91, 820, 4, and 430 in 1 million, which all exceed the South Coast Air Quality Management District's threshold of 10 in 1 million. Even if the project was within the scope of the Metro East EIR, under SEQUA guideline section 15162, the city is still required to prepare a project-level EIR because there is substantial evidence of new and for. because there is substantial evidence of new information of substantial importance, which was not known and could not have been known with the exercise of reasonable diligence at the time the Metro East EIRs were certified as complete, showing that the project will have a significant health risk impact from its indoor air quality, and a significant impact to birds from window collisions that were not discussed in the Metro East EIRs. For these reasons, and those found in our written comments, we respectfully request the Planning Commission deny the project and require the city to prepare a project-level EIR. Thank you.
And caller, before you hang up, can you please?
Thank you, Paige.
Caller, Paige, can you please repeat your last name for the record?
Yeah, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, my last name is Denny, S as in Frank, E-N-N-I-E.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller with the last, oh, I'm sorry, next caller is Thrive Santa Ana, please go ahead, state with your comment, your position, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm sorry, I wanted to comment on the general plan.
Okay, we will carry you over to the next item. Next caller with the last three numbers, zero-nine-four-nine, this is for item number one, please state your name, your position on the matter, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Ariselli Yen, and I am neutral on this project, but my concern is regarding parking, based on the information that you provided, where it stated that it didn't matter if it was a studio or a three-bedroom, two-bedroom, that they would only allocate two parking spaces, as it is, everyone's aware that the city of Santa Ana is very densely populated, and because of this issue, I believe that that needs to be listened to, to assess in allocating more parking spaces, because there's going to be an overflow out in the community if this is not addressed before this gets planned and finalized. Thank you.
Thank you, caller, can you please?
Thank you, Ariselli.
Sally, thank you.
Hello, yes, I'm here with Ariselli, and I'm a neighbor here, and we actually both live on North Chathamway in Santa Ana, and there's no parking on our street, there's no parking for us to park on our street, or anyone visiting, because we are between small apartment complexes, and people are coming in from everywhere to park on the street. The permit parking, I think the city of Santa Ana needs to consider in these areas, whether, if we have to continue to petition, and we may or may not get that, but I think we should have permit parking on a street like this because of the influx of cars coming in here that people that don't live here, and it does make it, it makes it difficult, and more housing and nice housing is wonderful, but if you don't allow enough parking, it impacts the streets, it, 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 there's going to be more than one area that's going to just bottleneck, and the traffic is going to really back up, and it's not even, it's not good for the values of our homes, it looks like a parking lot, and we have so many streets that look exactly like this, so it's unfortunate, but you need, I think, to reconsider the number of parking spaces for these apartments and commercial spaces, I don't think there's going to be enough to accommodate families, sometimes, you know, you have large families and extended families, and I, I don't think you're going to, you're not allowing enough parking, and it's going to overflow all of the surrounding communities.
Next caller with the last three, I'm sorry, with the last four numbers, eight-four-seven-seven, please state your name, your position on the matter, and your comments, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Dale Helbig, Park Santiago neighborhood, resident for the last thirty years, I have a couple of comments, one is on Exhibit Ten of the staff report, page one-thirty-eight, the publicly accessible open space, I always find this interesting that we have projects that are being built, and we say that we have publicly accessible open space, but yet this isn't going to any of the parkland acreage that we so dearly need in Santa Ana, and I was wondering if this project is providing any kind of long-term maintenance fee to Cabrillo Park or Mayberry Park, seeing as how those are in close proximity to this project, because I can see those parks both being utilized a lot more with the increase of residents that this is bringing in. The other thing is, I didn't see any reference to the Madison that's being built just on the other side of Fourth Street for this project, and that, along with the nineteen-oh-one project that is right there as well, I can see how some of the previous callers are really concerned about, about the traffic that's going to occur on Fourth Street right there accessing the freeways, so I hope that's carefully looked at before this project gets approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
Next caller with the last four numbers, five-one-nine-six, please state your name, your, your comment, and your position on the matter, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Elaine Adiola, I live on the southeast side of Santa Ana, on the crossroads of Mead and Warner. My main concerns with this, this matter, I am in opposition to it, mostly because of the obvious health and environmental concerns, second, because I am far more concerned as to why the, the location isn't taken into consideration for an opportunity to build affordable housing, as we all know, Amazon has purchased the old Orange County Register plant, and it is, it is supposed to create, like, far more job opportunities, and it's going to work with the Santa Ana Works Center, so, yeah, I stand in opposition because I think that we can take a whole other direction with this land use, especially because if, you know, the city were to use it as, as a form of affordable housing, it would be able to house residents who already live in the city, who work in those areas of the city, and who are going to work potentially at the new Amazon location, so that's my two cents on the matter, thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, next caller with the last four numbers, one, two, three, eight, please state your name, your comment, and your position on the matter, you will have three minutes, go ahead.
Good evening, Seth Echoal-Rubias with the Kennedy Commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter, we're in opposition to the development, not because it's not a great development that can bring housing to the city, but it does not provide any opportunity for residents who live in the city today, low-income families in the city are struggling to find housing that's affordable to them, and this is a great opportunity to include some affordable housing as part of this development. As a matter of fact, I think prior month ago, there were discussions that this development would be proposing either some funding for affordable housing, or include affordable housing as part of the development, and those discussions are not here today, but our need is still great, and the need is still important to be addressed, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arimas.
Caller with the last four numbers, three-one-nine-three, please, please state your name, your position on the matter, and your comment, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Yes, hello, my name is Erica Gonzalez, a community organizer, small business owner, educator, parent, and lifelong campanera, I am in very strong opposition of this project, we do not need more luxury apartments in our city, we have made it very clear at many of these meetings that we do not support more development in the city, we want community centers, we want green space, was the ERI done on the area, it's located right next to the freeway entrance and exit, was there a traffic impact report completed as well? Our city is already the densest in Orange County, fourth densest in the entire nation, what is the average cost of the apartments going to be, and how many will be actual affordable housing? You are required by the city to have at least ten percent, is there in-loose fees that were paid, if they were, then we need to know that information, was the surrounding neighborhood and community asked about what they wanted to see in this neighborhood, there are several apartment complexes already in this area, and the parking situation is already difficult, and these factors must be taken into consideration prior to the selling of the public land. Many community members have voiced their concern over the lack of green space and parks throughout Santana. Jesse Lopez was recently voted onto the city council for this ward, which is Ward Three, and she is part of Rise of Willowick, which is leading the fight against the gentrification of Willowick golf courts, so I suggest that this project be postponed until the community is fully engaged, and until all environmental impacts are fully considered, so please, listen to us when we tell you that we don't want luxury apartments, we want community centers, we want green space, we want parks, work with Jesse, she represents that ward, and she is going to fight for the community, thank you.
Chair, that concludes the callers for this item.
Thank you, I appreciate that. At this point in time, would the applicant like to make some final comments with respect to the comments made in the public hearing? Sean?
Yes, Chair, sorry, sorry about that, you were on mute, no, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to, to make some comments, so I want to just take a quick step back, so there was a number of comments, I'll just go through them, to the extent that I can touch on everything. So I know that there was comments as related to traffic analysis, we, we did a full traffic analysis with LLG, we worked in close concert with city staff and, and traffic engineers, I know specifically there was a question as related to stacking along Fourth Street, and potentially looking at ingress, egress to the site along Cabrillo Park Drive, what I would say is that we, we actually, you know, we first approached the city back in two thousand and seventeen with, as city staff knows, there's a kind of a project preview process where you can provide preliminary site plans, we studied that at length, there is a project median that runs along Cabrillo Park Drive that makes access into the site from Cabrillo extremely difficult, so after looking at that, we ended up selecting Fourth Street as the best ingress, egress location for the site, due to your ability to do a right-in, right-out turn, and turning into the site. The, the other comments, I think, were related to affordable housing, land use, SEQUA, so I'll just kind of take those one by one. So as it relates to, to land use, you know, the project that we're proposing is consistent with the city's general plan, it's consistent with the current zoning in place, and it's consistent with the Metro East overlay, which I believe was approved in two thousand and seven, which is really the land use document that governs what can be built there, so what we're proposing isn't like we're asking for a general plan change or a zone change, the city had already put policies in place that, that allowed for the, for that zoning, and now potentially, we're designing a project that's in, that's in conformance with that. As it relates to SEQA, we did study that extremely closely, the project, as staff mentioned, we had type specific traffic analysis, we did human health risk assessment as relates to air quality with urban crossroads, and our studies all came back saying that we were consistent with the existing originally EIR, and the recently updated EIR as well. And then the last comment, as it relates to affordable housing, you know, the city, as I think the Planning Commission is well aware, you know, there was the Housing Opportunity Ordinance, the WHO, which, you know, the city took it upon itself to, to amend the WHO, which was approved at city council, I believe, back in July or August, you know, candidly, we had nothing to do with that, the project would have been required for the WHO to have affordable housing, the city's council decided to, to amend that, and so, you know, we're, we're proposing a project that's consistent with the city's affordable policy, land use policy, so, you know, we think that we've met the intent of, you know, candidly, everything the city wants to, wants to see here, so with that, I'll, I'll close my comments, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Do any of the commissioners have a question of Sean at this point in time, Commissioner Garcia?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Yes, we, we had mentioned earlier that the applicant was, was open to installing some rooftop gardens in response to Commissioner Fan's comment.
That was, that was Commissioner Garcia.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was Commissioner Garcia, I'm sorry, so is there any more specific ideas as to where those would go that we could incorporate into the resolution? Or what, what the ideas are surrounding the installation of the gardens?
Yeah. It, and I, I want to, Matt Jackson from MJS Landscape Design on this call, I think, Matt, Matt, are you still with us? I apologize, he, he's our, 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 our landscape architect.
Hi, Sean, this is Matt with MJS, can you hear me, how I tried to unmute myself?
Yeah.
But I guess the question is in regards to rooftop gardens, and so I believe the comment would be a true green roof, is, is that what we're hearing?
Can you read that, a true what?
Yeah, so we can understand the question better, are we talking about a green roof where we would put plant material on, on the roof? Yeah.
Commissioner Morrissey, do you want?
Yeah. Yeah, well, I think the general comment was a rooftop garden, and I think the intent is to, you know, reduce the emissivity of the roof, and reflectance, and, you know, create a cooler roofing product, and a more useful green space.
Yeah, so the, the one thing that this site plan does a really good job is the parking structure in the center is basically completely covered with either amenities, plant material, which is a concrete structure, so it makes that easier, it, it just gets a lot more challenging once you go to the wood frame, and I know that's gets a little technical, but just supporting green roofs on wood frame construction is just complicated, so maybe Keith could, could respond to that in general, just because you're only allowed such a small amount of soil, that it would be difficult for plants to grow on, on, on this condition.
But, but I, I think Matt specifically, Keith, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I was going to say that, yeah, Matt's right, it is much more challenging and creates lots of waterproofing issues, and believe it or not, weight, the weight of soil. and creates lots of waterproofing issues and, believe it or not, the weight of soil is greater, can be greater than the buildings itself because it's so dense. So it creates a whole new set of issues, which are not only in terms of waterproofings like that, but added costs in the structure. And then as well as if you put a public space up on the roof there, you have to have access to it, you have to be able to egress it. It just creates a whole, a whole new set of challenges, which would be very costly and difficult to deal with.
But I think, just this is Sean from Waterford speaking. Commissioner, I think in first, as far as the comment, you know, we're open, and I think where we come down on this, we're open to adding on that rooftop deck additional green material up there. To Keith's point, he's the project architect, and to Matt, who's the landscape architect, you know, I think we would have to drill down and see what's feasible. But I mean, what I would tell you that is, we're committed to activating that area with green to the extent that, you know, it's feasible to do that. You know, the size of this rooftop is similar to the mark, which I'm sure a number of you have been up on that rooftop, but that's a project that was built in Santana about seven years ago. It's been a while, I can't remember what green space they have up there, but our project would be similar to that. But I think, I guess, you know, what we're committing to you is that we will study that and to the extent that we can implement it, we definitely will.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Do you have any other questions, Commissioner Morrissey of?
No, I don't have any, no further questions. I just want to follow up on the earlier comments, you know, kind of give them specific. So I don't have any comments.
Okay. Commissioner Nguyen?
No further question, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
No, no questions, thank you.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
No, no questions.
Okay, I don't have any questions of the applicant at this point in time either, so hearing no more questions, the public hearing is now closed. We'll bring it back to the commission for final questions and comments, final questions to staff. Do any of the commissioners have any questions that they would like to have answers to at this point in time from staff? Commissioner Garcia?
No, thanks.
Commissioner Morrissey?
No, no further questions, thank you.
Commissioner Nguyen?
No further question, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
No further questions, thank you.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Yes, to staff, there was a caller that talked about EIR reports, CEQA and all of that. Is there any substance to that, something that we missed, or did all the EIR studies and CEQA reports that needed to be done, were they all done?
Thank you, this is Selena Kellher. I've mentioned in my presentation, under Secret Guidelines, Section 15168 and 15162, the project was adequately analyzed in the program EIR for the Metro East mixed-use overlay. That is exactly the intent of a program EIR, is it's set to analyze the MEMU overlay, and this is a project that meets those development standards.
Thank you, Selena, and I just ask because I just, you know, want to verify. And then in regards to traffic, I know this is something that was a concern of mine before, but you guys explained it well, and regardless, Fourth Street's already impacted when it comes to time for folks to leave work. It's not like that all the time. There's certain hours that it gets congested. Now, there's an added lane, correct, that's being put in place just to turn? Is that correct?
This is Ed with the City of Santana, could you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, there is an added lane that's going to be added on Fourth Street between the freeway and Cabrillo Park for the westbound traffic.
Okay. Okay, thank you, just wanted to confirm.
I think, Cynthia, I think the other comment that was made with regards to the EIR was also made with regards to risks for, the risks for construction, and how did that fall into play with the EIR and the CEQA? Selena?
Hi, yes, thank you. Based on some of the comments received in regards to construction material and wood material, the project would be utilizing wood that meets the federal EPA standards for all products manufactured and imported into the United States. And then in regards to indoor air quality, again, it was the human health risk assessment was prepared, and it did not exceed any standards set by the Department of衧 safety.
Okay. All right, thank you, Selena. I have no further questions. Would anybody at this point in time like to make a motion? Please state who you are. Don't all do it at the same time. Would anybody like to make a motion on this item?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Ken?
I would like to make a motion to approve the site for review number 2020-dash-dishment.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Can I submit a friendly amendment?
Go ahead.
I would add an additional condition that a green rooftop, a green garden on the rooftop be added to the project. I think there are plenty of examples across the country and the world of how this is done efficiently and effectively, so I think that would be great if we can do that.
Okay, Ken, do you accept?
I accept that amendment.
Okay, so first of all, Ken, will you accept the amendment at this point in time?
That is an excellent recommendation and amendment, I would agree to it, yes.
Okay, and then I heard Cynthia Contreras Leo, you said that you were seconding the amendment as well as the motion on?
Correct.
On the table, okay?
Yes.
So we have a motion with a friendly amendment, friendly amendment's been accepted by Ken Nguyen, and we have a second. Any further discussion on this matter?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Tom.
So are we suggesting limits on that, or?
Yeah. There's, you know. Is it about the whole? I apologize, this is the applicant speaking. Can I ask a question, or is it out of turn?
It's, you're basically out of turn at this point in time, unless, unless, Ken? Go ahead, Tom, is your question of the applicant at this point?
No, I'm asking the rest of my colleagues if we're, you know, if we want to clarify the friendly amendment, is there, are there any limits we're talking about, or are we talking about the whole rooftop?
Okay.
Just for the applicant to respond, so we have more.
Norma, would you like to, would you like to make any comment as to the boundaries of what you're expecting, or what's your expectation?
Yeah, I would say that up to 90% of the remaining open space should be green.
Ken, this is a new condition for the applicant, there's certain things that we need to kind of box out, because there's certain things, candidly, we haven't had the chance to study. So before we agree to that, because this is new, I'd just like to speak if possible.
Go ahead.
No, what I would propose, because this is a discretionary approval, is that there's a condition that leaves, that leaves staff the discretion to, you know, within the context of, because to just say that 90% should be green space, and we've got a pool up there, we've got hardscape, I don't know.
Yeah, I meant the remaining empty space, so it would be outside of the scope of the existing.
Got it, okay.
You know, point of clarification, so whatever is concrete on Slide 6 right now, it should be, 90% of that ought to be green. And I think, you know, whether, and Commissioner Morrissey brings up a good point, whether or not you need to come back to us to approve that, or whether, you know, staff, I think that, I think that's a good question for us to address now.
Yeah, so from the applicant's standpoint, I mean, this is discretionary approval to, I mean, I'll be candid with you, this is a project that we intend to break ground on next year. If we have discretionary approvals that we have to come back to Planning Commission for, it'll delay the financing, will delay it. You know, we've dealt with this on other approvals where you put a condition in there that essentially allows staff, you know, to work, because this is the first time that we, and we're, let me be clear, we're happy to do it and work within the confines of what, you know, meets ADA, what's designed, but to come back to Planning Commission for an approval, you know, candidly, just wouldn't be feasible. So what I would propose is that there's a condition that states that, you know, we'll work with staff to design something that meets code, meets ADA, and that, you know, within the confines of what's left, you know, we'll make that into green space, but to just, you know, say that we have to come back, now that's a second bite at the apple, you know, which really destroys the intent of the MEMU specific plan. So that, so I would progressively request and ask that we have a condition that essentially allows staff to make the determination that it meets the intent.
Mr. Chairman, may I have a comment?
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Nguyen.
What I'm saying, what I'm thinking is the, I would support the idea of have staff to make the determination on the green space recommended by, it is a condition set up by the commission, but also I would like to ask possible can do the green space where is, could be applicable. It means some area material, you know, the rooftop may not be able to install a green space in it, but, you know, wherever applicable to the structure, the building, and, you know, a design, a building, whatever, and let the, allow our staff and the applicant and work together to come up with that, you know, for standardization where the green space can be installed.
Let me go back and just raise the question from a legal point of view, do we, if we make this condition of this, does this, does that force the item to come back to the Planning Commission at a later date, or is it going to be resolved at the council level?
Commissioners, it would depend on how you word the additional condition.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, I understand right now the applicant is stating that he needs time to see what's feasible as far as expense and as far as architecture. He mentioned that certain buildings can't support the green gardens. So I don't know how you want to word it, if you want them to just allow staff to approve it, or if you want it to come back to you or council, then that would require another meeting.
So I would progressively ask that, you know, that coming back for a second approval on a project that's already had a study session, and candidly, it's not a design guideline in the specific plan, you know, it's outside of the purview. So what I would progressively ask is that we have a condition that says, to the extent possible, with the additional open space up on the roof deck, we'll provide 90% green space, and, you know, staff, no different than, you know, they would determine certain plan check requirements, will determine that, but to come back for a second discretionary approval on a project that's already had a study session, you know, candidly, you haven't, you know, I was on the last study session, you know, there was a project that went through, and this, they had a roof deck, and this was not, that was not a comment to their project. So to ask an applicant to come back in with a new requirement, to me, just doesn't seem feasible, and we've got financing that's going to be dependent on that, you know, essentially what you're asking us to do is not, is not typical protocol.
Are you, are you at this point, though, agreeing to the request of Commissioner Garcia to have up to 90% green space?
I absolutely am, within the confines that it is something that we can work with our design team to meet, and that it fits the ADA, because there's certain codes, like I said, this is the first we're hearing of this issue, so we got to make sure that it's fully designed and within the feasibility of what can be built there. But to the intent that it can be done there, yes. And so what I would ask is that you leave it to staff so that we can get past the discretionary approval, it be put in as a condition of approval. You've got extremely smart, capable staff that can determine if we're meeting the intent of that condition, but to ask us to come back for an additional approval when that's typically, you know, not something that's been conditioned on other projects and is not in the design guidelines of the MEMU, to me, you know, just doesn't, doesn't seem fair.
I think I just want to address that I don't think that we were deciding one way or the other, I think we were about to discuss that, Sean, I think, and, you know, so I would turn to our fellow commissioners to decide how we want to proceed. I think, you know, I think there's goodwill from the applicant, so. Chair, do you want to retake the conversation?
Thank you. I think, good, all right. So having said that, I think that what we're trying to accomplish is not have this come back to the Planning Commission. So I would suggest that we word this in such a way that it allows you to do the due diligence on the project and due diligence on the green space, but that we leave it in the hands of staff to make the final approval based on what can be done. Mr. Chairman, this is.
Mark?
Yes?
Is there a way that we can ask Lisa, council, on how the suggestion would be to word it so that we don't have to come back?
I think, I think we had two, I think, let me just say, Min just had one point, and Lisa?
Yes.
Let me, let me, let me let Min make his comment, and then we'll come back to you.
Certainly.
Chair, what I would recommend is that we have the parameter of up to 90%. I would work with Lisa to frame a condition, basically providing a goal of up to 90% of covering the green space, and work with staff to determine as feasible how much of that area we can incorporate green space into, and that way we have the flexibility to work with the applicant, and we have the parameter of up to 90%, and the goal it is to get as close to 90% as feasible. So staff will work with, I believe we can craft it that way, the intent and the spirit of the condition is to obtain as much as possible based on design feasibility, and that would give staff enough direction to move forward.
Okay. Lisa, are you okay with that suggestion on the part of staff?
I have, I have maybe another.
Go ahead, Commissioner Morrissey.
I think the LEED standards require 50% or more of the roof surface. That's kind of the entry level LEED green roof requirement.
Uh, that, that's kind of the entry level, um, lead green roof requirement. So, um, so we can have a.
So, so up to, but not less than 50%? So we're not.
No, I, I, I heard, I heard the lead has a 50% or more.
Right.
Has a 50% minimum or more. And then what you've proposed, um, Commissioner Garcia, is that we have up to 90% of green space outside of what's already been noted.
Right.
As the pool and everything else.
Right. So with, what I'm, what I'm adding, uh, based on what Commissioner Morrison just ag- stated was maybe the language that Lisa can help with, you know, developer draft would say up to 90% green space outside of the amenities, but in no event, less than 50%. So somewhere between 50 and 90% to be, you know, whatever is feasible. And, uh, I, I guess what I'm saying is I don't want to bet against ourselves when the applicant is willing to expand that as much as possible. I think it's a trend, um, that, you know, the applicant made a good point. We, we should have requested it, uh, before. For me, slide six just really, the, the concrete really is like flapping me, uh, and, and it really, uh, is disglaring, uh, where I don't know that it was as glaring on the other presentation. So I think that if, I think it's, is setting a good, you know, uh, setting good precedent. So I, I would recommend that we include that language where it's somewhere between 90 and 50%.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, 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 um, the only concern I've got is, and it's just a, it's just simple in that, you know, looking at my neighbor across the street has above ground, you know, greens, uh, green boxes. Um, and when you look at the, the utilization of ground space, typically having three, I think she's got four or five of them out on her front lawn, you're going to have only about 60, 70% coverage. The rest of it's going to be walkways and, and, and ways of getting around the different garden boxes. So I, I, you know, I'm not sure we'll ever get to 90%, but, um, I think the range is, is a good, is a good idea.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I think to be fair, this is where the landscape artist would, would get creative because it could be a, a garden or it could just be, you know, open green space. And I think that's what's so great creative.
Yeah.
Is, is the applicant, can I clarify one question?
Sure, shoot.
I, I just, I want to, I want to, uh, I just want to clarify and, and first off, thank you. The, the comments are, were really good and appreciate that. Um, I just want to clarify and just, um, make sure that we're specifically just talking about the rooftop, rooftop deck element, um, of the project, correct? We're not talking about anywhere other on the roof of the buildings, of, of, of the wood frame. We're specifically just talking about the amenity decks on building A and building B. Uh, is that correct?
Commissioner Garcia.
Amen.
So, no, I think what we were discussing before, um, and Sean, I'm sorry, but I, I've forgotten your last name since.
Oh, Rossen.
Your first name since.
No problem.
Uh, um, but so the issue, and I think we were on the same page, uh, when, when I said 90% and you, you were concerned that you already had the amenities on the rooftop, the pool. Uh, and I think we were very clear when we say, well, it's, it's the concrete that we're looking at. So outside of the two buildings that are really, um, on, on slide number six, you have a ton of just gray concrete. Uh, and that's the piece that I think, uh, really needs some green space. Uh, and whether it's accessible to your residents or not, uh, I, I, I think the idea just having that green space provides, it's just environmentally friendly, but also, um, go ahead, you have.
Oh, so you're talking about, I'm sorry. So you're talking about the entire rooftop? I'm, I'm sorry. I thought we were just talking about the decks. So, so, so what you're asking, so that, well, so you're talking about the roof of the actual buildings and I apologize. Um, I guess I was unclear.
Correct.
Um, okay. Yeah. So I, 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 so candidly, that, that would be not, and again, okay, I, and it, I guess it's, uh, I, 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 being in a, in a public meeting where we're, we're looking at the same exhibit, it, that, that is not feasible. So I apologize when I agree. I thought we were talking about the rooftop decks. To say that we're going to turn the roof into green space, um, candidly, there's no other high density multifamily building in the city of Santa Ana that has that. And so I, and I apologize.
Well, I mean, that, that should not be the, well, I'm going to interrupt you, Sean. I apologize for that. But that is not, just because another, you know, other buildings don't quite have that yet, doesn't mean that we can't ask you to consider that.
No, I, I understand.
I, I don't, I don't want that to be the.
No, I, I understand.
Chair, Chair McLaughlin, this is Min. Uh, you've actually guessed, um, this conversation is a little bit beyond just a clarification. So if there is a, um, uh, a desire to speak and discuss with the applicant, uh, I suggest that we reopen the public hearing. Um, if not, the condition is two options, either to approve the project with the conditions or continue the project to allow the applicant to evaluate how much green we can, hence we look at. Um, but, you know, I mean, the third option is to open up the public hearing for a larger discussion.
Okay. Well, I think if it, i- if it's going to help to get some clarification, I'm more than happy to open up the public hearing at this point in time. So if, if that's, if, if that's necessary, then we, at this point in time, we'll open up the public hearing one more time. And, and, and does any of the commissioners have any questions of the applicant at this point in time?
So.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I do. Mr. Chair, I do.
Okay.
Okay. So it's, can you, one, please explain, just because this is, it is new for us as well as for you.
Yeah.
Um, why it can't be done on the rooftop? And if it can't, where else can you create open green space?
Yeah. And so this is.
Not there now.
This is the, the applicant speaking again, and, and thank you. And I, and I, I, let me be the first to say, I apologize for the, I guess I misinterpreted. I thought we were specifically talking about the rooftop decks, which are the large amenity spaces, um, um, in the project, um, not specifically the roof. These are, these are wood frame buildings. Um, and so, um, so those, that's, that, that's not concrete up there. Those aren't, that's not like a concrete jungle up on the roof. These are wood frame buildings. Um, and so the concrete component, uh, and then I think that's where I got misunderstood. The concrete component on the roof are, is those large rooftop decks above the garages. Um, those are feasible to, to, um, and, and, and within the design of a project of this magnitude, um, to be able to support additional green space. To say that you're going to, um, turn a wood frame building, um, into, um, effectively 90% green space, um, you know, candidly, that, that, that's going to take this project and its feasibility, not to mention that we're, we're now asking about a whole wholesale redesign as it relates to materials and all of that, um, which, um, that, it's not in the specific plan documents. It's never been contemplated nor, um, and I, and I fully appreciate, um, fully appreciate your comment where just because it's not ever been done in the city, for why you wouldn't ask for it. But what I would say is it's never been done in any project in Orange County. Um, so you're now taking a feasible project and now candidly, I'm point blank telling you that the feasibility of building this project with 90% rooftop, uh, you know, it's, it's now, you've taken a wood frame building and saying, I, you know, we got to see if it's even feasible.
Okay. So then the second half of the question, that was my colleague that, um, had prior, said that forth, but, um, where else then can you do that?
Well, on the rooftop decks, you know, we have, we have, and I, and I don't know if, um, Commissioners, if you've been on top of the, you have, these will be the two largest rooftop decks in the county, um, you know, on par with the Mark, um, which is a project that, uh, was built in, I think, 2013 or 14 in, in the city of Santa Ana by Lion Communities, um, right across, um, from, uh, the Doubletree Motel off MacArthur. Um, um, if any of you've been up on that rooftop deck, um, you know, it's a, it's an expansive open space. It's a concrete structure. Um, you know, our decks will be on par in size, um, with that rooftop and, and that would be, um, that would be suitable to have additional green space. And again, I apologize. I misunderstood the, the topic and I thought that's what, what we were talking about, not, not the actual rooftop to the residential buildings because that's just, that, that's not concrete and that's, that's different. Um, and Matt Jackson from MJS, Key, if you guys are on this call, you know, you know, feel free to jump in because you guys do all the design work for most of the large, you know, multifamily projects in Southern California.
So, so what you're saying, what you're saying is, is that, um, the two decks that on, on building A and building B, uh, that surround the pool, because those are built on top of the parking garage, which is concrete.
Correct.
They, it, it can support what you're, what, what's being asked for with regards to the green garden. The rest of the space, which is going to be built on top of wood frames, does not have the load bearing, does not have the load bearing capability of.
That's correct.
Supporting, uh, a garden area of 90%, up to 90%, but less than, but no, but greater than 50%. So I guess the, the, the question is, uh, my, my, my one question is, what are we looking at as far as available, um, available, uh, space up top? Are we looking at maybe 10,000 square feet or, you know, 13,000 square feet?
Um, Matt Jackson from MJS, if you wouldn't mind answering that, uh, that question with regards to the size of the roof decks and, and what, you know, is programmable, um, up there.
Chairman, this is Min again. Um, at this point, I think we're getting into, uh, a design of the project where we may not have the answer. And I, I would recommend that the planning commission consider allowing the applicant to work, uh, on evaluating how much they can provide and come back and provide an answer at the next, um, meeting so that it, it's more feasible.
Yeah, I, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with that statement, but.
Can I, can I make a comment, uh?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think, I think Min's suggestion is an excellent one. I think there are, uh, it is feasible over wood, uh, frames and, you know, but I think giving the applicant an opportunity to review and really understand what is feasible, if anything at all. I think it's a great opportunity, actually. If, if it's true that nothing like this exists in Orange County, I think it's a great opportunity for us to seize the moment. And, um, and if it means having the applicant go back and take a quick look and come back with what is possible, uh, I think it's an exciting opportunity, truthfully.
Okay. I, I, I'm, and I agree with you. I, I want to make sure though, that before we go back, before we do something and continue this item, let's say, um, I want to make sure that we all have some basis of understanding as to what's being asked by the commission. Uh, and, and I, I agree with you. I, I mean, we did have this discussion when we had the discussion on One Broadway because we talked about the fact that we would have, uh, potentially a public garage adjacent to One Broadway. And the comment that several people from the community brought up was to, to look at doing a rooftop garden on top of the parking lot, which is considered to be a concrete structure. So we have, we've had people ask for that kind of, um, um, amenity in, in past. So.
So.
Definition.
This is the applicant.
Are you comfortable? Yeah. Are you comfortable with what's been defined at this point in time?
As the, as the applicant, you know, what I would tell you that, you know, we would respectfully ask that, uh, um, you know, we've, we've been, this project, um, and, you know, we're, we're all dealing with a pandemic. Um, you know, we've, we've been two years in the making. We've had a study session on this and then the last meeting, you know, unfortunately, you know, we weren't, we didn't have a quorum. Um, it, it, we, we've, we've designed this project with the intent of a specific plan. Um, we've worked countless hours with city staff. Um, and, you know, our goal is to, and let's be clear, in light of the challenging COVID environment that we're in, financing projects is not, you know, i- i- is not like what it was six months ago. We have our equity lined up. We have our financing in place. We think that this will be a huge economic boom, um, to the city, um, to the tax rolls, to the employment community. Um, and, you know, we, we're, we're ready to go. Um, I, what I, what I would say is that when you have a specific plan document, you know, like I said, we, we aren't asking for a general plan amendment. We aren't asking for a zone change. We have designed our project, um, in the confines of the intent of those land use documents. Um, we've gone through four rounds of plan track with city staff. Um, you know, to our, you know, I, we've met the intent of all the design guidelines of, of that document. Um, I would requestfully ask that, um, that, uh, that the council would, uh, or that, excuse me, the commission would, would take action tonight. Um, and if, if green elements are something that the city wants to implement future projects, then make it a policy question, implement it into the specific plan. I, but what I would tell you is, is that, and we're talking potentially about a wholesale redesign of the project. Um, and we're, we're at the point where, you know, we're ready to move forward with financing. Um, and I, I would just ask that, that we could, um, we could have, we could have a decision tonight because it, it's, you know, we, we've been waiting for 18 months to move this project forward and we think that we've done everything within the confines of the design. Um, and so, you know, we, so with that all.
If I may, if I may, this is Lisa.
Yeah, okay, Lisa, go ahead, please.
Yeah. Um, I just, I just want to let you all know. I mean, the project is consistent with the development standards that are specified in the MIMU. And we have to be careful again, like we've talked about before, with the nexus. We have to have a nexus between requiring this additional green roof or additional area of green roof and the impact of the project. So I mean, we could add a condition that says that, uh, rooftop decks have to be no less than 50% and up to 90% green space. Uh, I don't know if you're amenable to, to that, but that's just an option I wanted to mention.
Could, this is Matt, the landscape architect. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
One, one item that I think we could discuss about green roofs, because this, is what we're really discussing is green roofs because the, the, the rooftop deck itself is going to be a combination of, of, of the appropriate amount of hardscape and green space. But one compromise could be on the garage structure itself, there are rather large clubroom and fitness buildings. I, I believe those could be designed appropriately because they're on a type one construction, uh, to, to support, uh, a green roof. And I think that Sean would be willing to, to, um, accommodate, you know, 50 to 90% of those. And I think it would be something that would be identified, you know, and someone mentioned an airplane. You would certainly see those. They're also kind of the highest point of the building. I think they would, they would demonstrate some good green principles and it could be done and accomplished. I just think we're, we're going to have a very difficult time trying to achieve, uh, green roof on wood frame construction. It's, it's almost, it's very, very difficult. And I know Sean's mentioned that, but from a construction technique, it's, it's, it's very, very challenging. So those are, those are big structures. I think as, um, a design element, I think that we would embrace that. Uh, and, and those are, uh, a significant amount of, of real estate up there. They're, they're two pretty large buildings and they're the highest point of the project. So I think they would go a long way and demonstrate some good prin- uh, green principle. So if Sean would be amenable to those buildings, the clubroom and fitness on each of the rooftop decks over the concrete structure being, uh, green live roof, I think that's certainly something that we could accomplish in the design.
Yes, we would.
Okay. Um, Norma, i- is there something you would like to comment on that? Are you, are you o- okay with the proposal or what would you like to do?
I, I appreciate Matt's comments. I, I do think that this is an opportunity, and I don't want to discount Sean's, you know, concerns, but I think Lisa's proposal is a good one, where we approve it conditioned on this language that I think gives everybody the leeway to do what, what can be accomplished, gives the staff the opportunity to work well with the applicant to accomplish that, and allow the applicant to proceed without necessarily having to come back to us. But I, I think Lisa's proposed language is, is strong. And Lisa, you said somewhere between 50% and 90%, right? To be extent feasible. I'm sorry?
Yeah, you, you, you're breaking up a little bit there, but I think he said, no, no less than 50%, no greater than 90%.
Right. And I would be, you know, I, yeah, and I would be, you know, happy to, to be, to go down to 85% so that it gives more comfort level to the applicant as well. I think this is a good first move for Santa Ana and Orange County.
Let me, let me just, let me just qualify this. Are we, is, is it your intent to have this for the entire roof structure? Or is it your intent that it can be done just for the amenity roof structure?
Is that a question for me, Mark?
Yes.
Yeah. So I think it, it would be a combination based on the comment from Lisa and, or the comment from Matt, and then Lisa's statement. And I'm looking at, I, you know, the, the highest points. And I think that it could probably be accomplished within that 50 to 85% language that Lisa is proposing.
But, okay, I, I'm, go ahead.
No, I, I, but yeah, I think it was to clarify that it's the building on the amenity roof deck. And then it's the, the, the roof of that. So that's the fitness center and the clubroom. So essentially what we're talking about is green space on that amenity room that's on the roof deck, which is all concrete, because to Matt's point, it's very feasible there.
Right. And I think, I think what, what I, what I'm saying, Mark, is that Lisa's language gives those the leeway to, to get there.
Okay.
And, and I, I just think we, we provide them the discretion to work with staff to accomplish the goal. And if they, I'll just, you know, on the concrete buildings, and that accomplishes the goal within that percentage point, then, you know, I think it's a step in the right direction.
Okay. I mean, I just, I, I just want to make sure we all understand that it's not, you know, well, we'll let, we'll let Lisa.
I think, I think what you're, yeah, I mean, I think, I do, I think that Lisa can come up with, I think her proposed language is perfect.
Okay.
And you said rooftop, right, Lisa?
Yes, on the roof structure.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, again, all right, I, I, I'll let it be. I just want to, just want to make sure we all have a clear understanding of what's being requested of the, of the applicant at this point in time. Because what I hear the applicant saying is, if we're going to try to put this on top of the wood structure, it's not going to be feasible.
This, this is the applicant, yes, we're, it's not feasible on the wood, but we're happy to do it on the amenity building, on the concrete structure, and the concrete deck. It's very feasible there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I have a comment?
Go ahead.
In my opinion, that, you know, the, the, the green space requirement only could able to apply on the structure or building can able to support it. And if the, the food wood structure building, I don't think possible, feasible to do it. So the concrete building will be, can be done easily. But also, I would like to make a comment to the applicant. The planning commissioner have the right and, and authority to make any condition, apply condition on the, on the project for the best interest of our city and our residents. So, you know, even though I, we do understand that we're time is money and delaying project costs the applicant more money. But again, you should understand and you should allow us to, to make our recommendation or my, our set forward condition on, on a project for the best interest, interest of the city and the resident. I hope you would understand that.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any, anything else at this point in time? So if there are no further questions to the applicant, no further questions to staff, I'd like to close the public hearing again at this point in time and bring it back to the commission for a final, a final motion. Okay, so we've closed the, we've closed the public hearing? And we're coming back to this.
Could the secretary, um, county, uh, commission secretary read the, the final, final motion, please?
Assistant City Attorney Lisa Stark, I'm going to defer to you on this one. If you can please read into the record how this condition should be reflected?
I, I will read it as I, as I think it stands. We had a, we had a, a motion by Commissioner Winn to approve. We had a second by Garcia with a friendly amendment to add a condition of approval to require green garden on the rooftop structures, no less than 50% and up to 90%.
Okay. Everybody agree with that statement?
Yes, I would agree to it.
Okay, so I think Cynthia, you had the second and with the amendment. And Ken, you had the first, first motion. So at this point in time, any other comments from Commissioner Garcia?
Just, is it clear?
Nothing further.
The, the parking structure? Because that said the entire rooftop.
That's right. You are correct. It said the entire rooftop. So are we okay with that statement?
I believe, I believe that the green space on the amenity building, is that correct?
No, it's, it's the entire building. It's the entire building. That's what.
Okay, but, but, but the entire building, uh, of, of the cement building, structure building, or the wood structure?
I, I've asked the question several different ways, and the answer I've gotten back is that it's the entire roof structure, wood framed as well as concrete. That's what's being included in the 50 to 90%. It is not just the amenity buildings that are included in the 50 to 90% statement. Now, is that, if that's.
I guess I, I don't understand, because the, if I may make a comment.
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
Applic, applicant has stated that project as a standard is feasible if we put a rooftop garden on the wood structure. So.
Correct.
I think it's, I, I would be in favor of continuing this for a couple of weeks and, and work this out in the meantime.
This was the, this was the language as I heard it. And if, if Commissioner Garcia wants to clarify, she can certainly clarify. This is what I heard, and that's what I was reading into the record.
I, I understand that. I understand fully.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Garcia, is there anything you'd like to add, delete, or change at this point in time?
No, but I do think, I think Commissioner Contra was going to say something.
Okay, Cynthia?
No, I, I'm with Norma. I just, I think that what we're trying to do here is find something that meets Commissioner Garcia's request, which I think is a great innovative idea, but also to not have the applicant have to return. I, I understand his concerns, but I think we're trying to all move forward to not have to come back.
So, so if, if we're talking about conditioning the project on the entire wood frame, then I would ask that, I would requestfully ask that we continue the item then, because I, I would tell you that, to say that we're going to have a, I'm telling you that it's not feasible. So we're going to, we're saying the entire wood frame, then we are going to have to, we will come back. So it's a self-defeating purpose to condition it with that. You know, we can make it feasible on the concrete structures, but I would requestfully ask that we continue the item then, because we, so that we can appropriately have the collaterals to show that it's not feasible on the wood frame.
The other, the other thing, commissioners, is we could add the language as feasible. And then if it's not feasible on the wood structures, and the developer shows that, proves that to staff, then we can make sure that the green space amenities are at least up to 90% on the concrete structures, as mentioned.
I would agree. I would support that. Commissioner Garcia?
I, I think that would work, subject to what Lisa said, that it would be, the applicant would be required to show the staff that it is indeed not feasible to, to do that on the remainder of the building.
Okay. So you're okay with that amendment, so that it, we're not continuing the item? We're allowing staff to review the item with the, with the condition and move forward at this point in time?
That's correct. I mean, I think Commissioner Contra said it perfectly. We're not trying to, we're trying to move the process along and still achieve, I, I think, you know, the purpose of, of creating something positive for, for this development and for the city.
This is the applicant speaking. So there was a, a project that went through a month ago, which was right before the study session, that had the same construction typology in a roof deck. You know, candidly, this, that, that, this wasn't, this, this condition wasn't contemplated on that, on that project. So I, so I guess what I would requestfully ask is, what's the policy difference? And that was a project candidly that wasn't consistent. It had a zone change. So, so, so I guess what I would ask is, the nexus for, for, for this condition as it relates to, to previous projects and candidly, projects after this? Because what, what, what I, what I would hate to do is, is that this will delay the project, because now we're going to have to prove to staff that it's not feasible. It will delay financing in a time that candidly, in the COVID environment, this is a $250 million project. You know, I will tell you, it's challenging enough. Now we're going to have to, we're going to have a condition that's going to provide additional resources to prove that we can't do it. You know, so all, all we're asking is, is that there's a level playing field that, that we know going in, because I, I mean, I was, it was 30 days ago, that project that went through, it got unanimous support, and this was never contemplated. And so what we're saying is, is we're fine living with the condition on the rooftop, because it's feasible. It's absolutely feasible on that concrete structure. It's not feasible on the wood frame, nor has it ever been contemplated on any wood frame building in your city. And to, at the 11th hour, bring it up, you know, I would say that we think that, that, that's setting a new policy, which, you know, if you're going to set a new policy, we appreciate that. We, but that would, you know, take study commissions and, and, and go through that process and allow people to understand it as they design buildings moving into the future. So I, I think that it would be bad precedent to set it on this building, and it's never been contemplated before.
Mr. Chairman, this is Wintai. If I may make a suggestion, you know, to the applicant at this point as presenting their information and what they think would be feasible, I think anywhere on the rooftop, we can work with the applicant, as long as in the concrete area, we can work with them to design additional green space. I think additionally, I've heard that they have also committed to putting some green rooftop on some of the higher elements where they have a community space on the rooftop that where they would incorporate additional green space as well. I think that would be a great first step in terms of starting to evaluate green rooftop and be able to work with the applicant to start setting this trend and not necessarily having to make this project pass the example.
Again, I, I'm not, I'm not going to disagree or agree with your statement, but Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Garcia has clearly defined at this point in time what her expectation is. Unless she wants to change that expectation at this point in time, we're, we're back to where we have 50% or more, 90% less of the entire built roof structure. That's the question. Is it, is it a fair ask? You know, I think that under the circumstances, there's always going to be the possibility of somebody asking something that, that they might have seen or heard, or, or have been participating in, in another, in another, you know, timeframe. But to say that we've gotten all this way, and we've made it to this point, and now the 11th hour, we're changing the, the parameters, yeah, I think we are changing the parameters, but it, it, it's something that has come into play in this discussion. Is it, you know, you know? We've got two choices here. We have a choice to continue, which would be that we would continue it to, to December 14.
Mr. Chairman.
Or we have, yeah.
Um, I just Googled it. And there is some validation in regards to a roof collapsing, trying to build a garden on a wood top. But it does suggest, and, and this could be the last one, a suggestion, and then we move on and, and make another decision. But if we're trying to create green space where people can, can use that as more open space, how about putting a pergola where it's not on the actual wood top, but it's higher above, that people can still create a new open space, that there is green with the pergola? So now we're just talking about building this wood structure with putting plants on it. It's not on the, on the actual rooftop of the wood rooftop, but it's creating open space. Commissioner Garcia?
I, I'm trying to picture what, and, and admittedly, we're two hours in, so I may slow down. So I'm trying to picture what you're, you're, you're saying that it would be like a raised, uh, I, I'm sorry, I don't, I, I didn't follow. I apologize.
So basically, it's like a wood frame, and you put plants on it that grow and hang on it. So you're still creating a green space, and it's an open space. People can still enjoy it.
Right.
But it, it is creating open to green space.
Right. I think, yeah, exactly. Right. And I think that's where Lisa's or Council's language really provides the opportunity to get creative and do this and achieve it. And I think, you know, it, it, it shouldn't be that controversial.
Well, to be clear, none of that rooftop is usable, open space. The, the usable open space is, is, is the concrete where the amenity buildings are. None of that, none of that rooftop is usable. I mean, so there's no accessibility to any of that rooftop other than where the, the amenity structures are. So that's rooftop that no one will have access to, and it's not usable. And then just even putting additional green space, it's like putting green, you know, plant, it's putting green on your house. You got to figure out how to water it, how to make sure you don't have additional water intrusion. So I, I know that image, and that image, I think, candidly, does an extremely poor job of showing what those roofs are. But that's, that's, those are wood frame structures, and that's a roof. And then there's a rooftop element where the amenity building is that's made out of concrete. The concrete can support that. Above, you're going to have units below the, the, the residential structures. So putting any green element, especially when those are. So putting any green element, especially when those aren't that, none of that area is accessible. So to be clear, when we talk about the rooftop element, that's not concrete up there and that's not accessible open space. The only area that's accessible is, is that big, is where, around the pool area, which is above the parking garage, which is, which is elevated above all of that. So that, that's where you're going to see, so, so from the, from an airplane, that's going to be just a normal rooftop, no different than 1901 or, you know, candidly, any, you know, new residential structure being built in, in the city. That, none of that's accessible. The only area that's accessible is around the pool area, which is where that amenity deck is. So I just, I want to make that point of clarification.
Is that Norma? Is that?
Yeah, I, I understand that, you know, and I think that was one of the things that I did preface. Whether it's accessible or not, really the idea is just having some, some of that green space. It really is environmentally friendly and I think it achieves a lot of, you know, the goals that the city has set forth in terms of, you know, becoming more green as well. So I, I, you know, I don't know what, Sean, if you know, the percentage of, you know, rooftops over the concrete space that you're addressing. Is it less than 50%? Is that the concern?
Well, no. What my concern is having any conditioned, um, um, green element above the residential framing of the buildings. What, 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 what is extremely feasible, and I, I don't know if we can go back to one of the images that shows the, the project.
Okay.
But what is feasible is you see the amenity deck. That's all concrete. So I, you know, what I would propose.
I think, I'm going to go back to, I really believe that, because, I mean, you're, you're making your case now. And I think that Lisa suggested language by adding "if feasible", it, it's going to achieve that same goal. You know, we, we know your goodwill. We know the staff is highly qualified. You guys have worked well together for 18 months on this. I, I trust that it is the best language, you know, to proceed. And I would, you know, the "if feasible" clause allows everybody to walk away knowing that we're, we're moving in the right direction for the city and allowing you to move forward without having to come, to come back to, to the planning commission.
I, I really appreciate that and that's, that's great. The, the only other request that I would may make, would like to make is if we just say in the context of the amenity spaces. Because that, that solves, that, that would solve this. If it's in the context of, because that's all concrete if we.
But, but I think, Sean, I mean, and I know, I, I think, I think that this is, man, I'm waiting for you to jump in and say this is beyond the, what's the open, anyway.
What, what I would suggest is that.
But I think that, yeah.
Uh, if you would allow us to have to work with the applicant to determine, at the minimum, in the concrete area and outside the rooftop, wherever it's feasible. So that we can work with the applicant. And I think that would give both sides the flexibility to work within the concrete as well as beyond the rooftop, whenever feasible. And, you know, we'll, we'll use our best design just to see how that can work.
Right. Yeah. And, and again, I think Lisa's, Lisa's recommendation achieved that.
Sean, I think that will give you, the applicant, the flexibility to work with staff to make that determination.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. So given what we've got at this point in time, do we have a motion and a second? And are we moving forward with staff getting with the applicant and resolving the, what can be made into green space at this point in time? And it's not going to come back, nor is it going to be continued by the, by the planning commission at this point?
I think there's a motion on the floor for the approval of the project with the friendly amendment to work with staff to incorporate green garden space in the concrete area. And to also determine whether feasible, other areas of the roof, um, for green space, not necessarily open space accessible, but maybe some green rooftop, if feasible. And that would give the applicant and staff the flexibility to evaluate how much can be done on the remainder of the roof outside of the concrete. So there was an exception to that and that would be the motion.
Okay. So is there any further discussion that any commissioner would like to make at this point in time? I'm going to go through the list one, one more time. Commissioner Garcia?
Nothing else for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Uh, yes. At the, at the risk of going on much longer, I'm going to ask what kind of filters we have in the HVAC system.
Yeah, there, um, it's the, it's the MERV. And I forget, I, I'm not an HVAC expert, Commissioner, but it's the MERV 20, or it's the highest grade MERV filter, which are the, the, essentially, it's the industrial grade MERV filters, which is consistent with, you know, um, they meet the code and they're, they're consistent with the highest standards to relate to the HVAC for, for Class A properties.
Commissioner Morrissey, this is Foyna Kelleher. It's the Minimum Efficiency Reporting Value MERV 13, as defined by the American Society of Heating, Refrigeration and Air Conditioning Engineers. Standard 52.2.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Nguyen?
No further questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
No questions.
Okay. I have no further questions. Madam Secretary, will you do a roll call vote at this point in time?
Yes. Roll call vote. Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Commissioner Fan? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Fan has recused herself. Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
She recused herself.
Yes. Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Aye.
Inspector McLaughlin?
Aye.
Motion is approved by majority vote.
So we have seven, we have six. Okay.
A motion approved by majority vote with Commissioner Fan Epstein.
Okay. Will we bring, can we bring Commissioner Fan back at this point in time? Thank you to the applicant for allowing us to go through this process the way we did tonight. And.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We'll wait to hear from, we'll wait to hear from staff as to what the outcome of your review is. So thank you again. Appreciate your time. We will, we will now bring Commissioner Fan back into the room.
Hello? Hi, I'm back.
All right. So we have Commissioner Fan. This is the time and place to consider item number two, Environmental Impact Report Number 2020-03 and General Plan Amendment Number 2020-06 for the Comprehensive Update of the Santa Ana General Plan. Please note, recommendation on this matter will be followed, will be forwarded to the City Council for final determination. Before we begin, do any of the commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regards to this item? Commissioner Garcia?
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Uh, nothing to disclose. Thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
Uh, nothing to disclose, but I would like to make, to make a motion to continue the item and the public hearing to a future date determined by staff just so we can address all the environmental justice claims we have and the different emails or the, the letters we've been receiving for community engagement and input.
Okay. Well, let me, let me come back to that. Commissioner Fan?
Nothing to disclose.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Nothing to disclose.
And myself, I have nothing to disclose at this point in time. So we have a proposal on the table right now to make a motion to continue this item. Do we have a second to that motion?
My second.
Tom?
That's yes.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second.
Chair, I can do a roll.
Does anybody want to? So I, sorry.
I'm sorry. I was just going to say that I can do a roll call vote when you're ready.
Okay.
We have a discussion.
We can have discussion at this point in time. So I'll go first with Commissioner Garcia. Any, any comment with regards to continuing this item?
Not right now.
Commissioner Morrissey?
I, can we, is, we, can we ask staff questions at this point or we just?
Yeah. Well, I mean, we can ask, we can ask staff comments, but, but staff does have a presentation that, that they would like to present at this point in time. So, but we have a motion on the, on the table and, and a second to continue this item.
This is, this is for the EIR only, correct? Or is this for both?
I'm sorry. This is for both, this is, this is both for the entire, the, is the Environmental Impact Report Number 2020-03 and the General Plan Amendment Number 2020-06 for the comprehensive update.
I'd like to withdraw my second then. I'd like to hear the presentation.
Okay. Commissioner Nguyen?
Um, the general plan, plan amendment had been worked by staff in numerous community meetings. And, and, you know, we, each and every one of us, we see the 11 different elements of different, various different design, land use and safety and so on. The, the project, the, the general plan amendment had been worked on for the last four years. Myself was a member of that, you know, the input team on, on working out this amendment. You know, in my opinion, I think it's the general plan amendment have long overdue and we should listen to staff because I, I strongly believe that staff had worked so hard to put this presentation together. And, and we, we owe our staff that much and listen to their, their presentation. And we should make the decision tonight on, on, on this, the general plan amendment. That's my opinion.
Okay. Commissioner Rivera, you've made the motion. Commissioner Fan, any comment?
Yeah, I, I would like to hear the presentation also. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
I'd also like to hear the presentation.
Okay. All right. So at this point in time, we have a motion, but no second. So if it's, if it's okay with Commissioner Rivera at this point in time, I think the majority of the commissioners have asked to at least hear the presentation and we can come back to the proposed action after we've heard the presentation.
That, that fine. I mean, we can listen to the presentation.
Okay. So with that said, Vince, you're going to start out with the presentation and I believe we're going to have several other people that are going to be involved in the presentation. Mr. Chairman?
This is the chair. This is, I, um, I will, I'll start with introduction and we'll work with the presentation subsequently. Now, this, I just want to give a very brief background. The city kicked off the comprehensive update to the general plan back in November of 2015. This has been a five-year journey, almost to the date, actually. Today's the ninth. And the comprehensive update was in the new city of the City Council as part of their adoption of the 2014 strategic plan. Under the leadership of Mayor Polillo and the City Council, allocated $3.2 million in staff resources to completing this key initiative of the plan, which has not been updated since 1982. The work commenced in 2015 under a guiding principle that says that the plan will reflect the value and the voice of our community. So through a multi-year extensive process, the city worked and listened to residents of all ages, collaborated with community stakeholders, service organizations, youth and senior representatives, you know, business community, neighborhood leaderships, and the general plan advisory committee to formulate the shared vision and the adoption of five core principles. These core principles were used for drafting, if I recall, the, the implementation actions and the goals of the general plan. And they relate to health, equity, sustainability, culture and education. As this is a 25-year visioning plan that includes 11, 11 elements addressing the state mandates as well as local topics, the plan contains goals, policy and action and is a living document that will be reviewed annually. So tonight, staff is bringing you the body of work that has been completed as a result of countless hours of work by the community, both the current and past city council, as well as the current and past planning commissioner. There are numerous staff involved in this process and we're looking to help move this key city council initiative forward for adaption. Joining me tonight in the presentation is planning manager Vince Rigoso, as well as senior planner Melanie McCann. On our team, we also have Ricardo Soto, the associate planner. Zed Kalula is the traffic engineer. On the line, we also have a consultant, Colin Drucker, and Joanne Hadfield from Facework, who've done a lot of the heavy lifting on drafting the documents. Uh, we also have a consultant on traffic, Bill Ewle from IDI. And at this point, I'd like to panel with the presentations and Vince to continue. Vince?
Hi, men. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. And as men mentioned, you may have picked up on it, the word that he used a lot in his opening comments was "vision". And that's exactly what this document is. This is our vision for the next 25 years. And this is, we call it a golden city beyond the 2045 general plan. And what's going to happen here during this presentation, we're going to go over the purpose and elements of the general plan, how the document's organized, some of the key components of it. We'll get in a little more detail on the land use focus areas because at the end of the day, that's what majority of the time we work on is with the land use element. And then we'll cover the environmental impact report document as well. So again, I think we've gone through this many times and most of you already know, general plan is our long-term vision and policy direction that helps guide our physical development and our quality of life throughout the city. And this document has a 25-year life period here, but hopefully we'll update it sooner than that. But through this document here that you're going to, that you had, we've distributed it to you in a hard copy as well as an email. You have 11 elements. And the 12th element down the bottom left, the housing element, that has its own separate cycle. It's not part of this discussion, but you will see it next year in 2021 because that's when our timeline is for getting that element updated. So you have 11 elements there and on the bottom right, environmental justice. You may have seen many comments and heard many discussion points from, from the community, from staff about environmental justice. That's covered under SB 1000, which was adopted in 2018. And we essentially had two ways of covering environmental justice. One is we can create a whole new element or two, we can weave it throughout the existing document. And we chose the second, to weave it through our document because many of these elements that you're going to cover tonight through Melanie McCann have environmental justice components, parts of it there. So we decided to take that comprehensive approach and weave it throughout our entire document. So community outreach, and again, something that's been very important, been since day one. As men said, we started this in 2015 and in December 2015, we've had the general plan advisory group. And that was our first start at outreach. What we've had over the past five-year journey that we've gone through is we've had over 60-plus community meetings and workshops talking about the general plan. We had an online community survey with almost 700 responses. We've sent out flyers, over 32,000 flyers for environmental justice in our environmental justice areas. I'll go over that in a few moments. And over 44,000 direct mailers to property owners and tenants affected by this general plan outreach. We have a webpage to dedicate the general plan work. We've had meetings with environmental justice groups and some of those include Madison Park, which has been very vocal and very connected with us. Orange County Environmental Justice, the Logan Neighborhood, as well as Artesia Polaris, to name a few of these environmental justice groups. You may know that we have, we received money from the federal government for CARES programs as part of the pandemic. While the CARES team goes out, went out twice a day, plus once during. Well, the Cares team goes out, went out twice a day, plus once during the afternoon at parks. And we've been a part of that Cares program, putting out a tent, putting out a booth and talking about the general plan to anyone and everyone who will, who will come see us and hear us. And then we had many one-on-one meetings with the planning commission as well as the city council. All these different outreach pieces that we've done here have gone towards where we're at today, which is uh doing a spinal document here before you that drafts general plan elements. So one of the things I mentioned a few minutes ago was environmental justice. And Santa Ana has environmental justice neighborhoods that are identified by the state, disadvantaged areas there. We have 17 census tracts in the city that touches 21 of our neighborhoods. So because we're an environmental justice community, we have to do environmental justice outreach and policies to comply with Senate Bill 1000. So we've, we've done that, that's what we've done. You see it in your elements and your documents there. We have incorporated policies that help reduce environmental house, health impacts, the diverse, that adversity affect our residents. We developed policies and implementation methods that prioritize improvements and projects in these EJ communities. And we've also included the EJ communities in decision-making processes. Over the last though, say, two months, we've had uh several numerous outreach meetings with environmental justice groups in an effort to get their feedback on the document, help make it a better document, which is before you this, this evening. And that map to the left shows you all the EJ communities in the city that are um environmental justice, disadvantaged communities. So what we heard during our outreach meetings, and these are some of the key points here, uh reduce an exposure to, to uh, to particular matters, uh other forms of pollution, access to healthy foods, increased public engagement, safe and sanitary housing. And then the last one, conflicting and incompatible land uses, how we're gonna address that. So what we did as part of that, you have a community element, which Melanie will touch upon a little bit later. And again, one of those five core values that Min mentioned earlier, health is a big key core value within the city. Health and wellness was also one of the topics that we heard during all this extensive outreach. What did we hear? Access to healthy foods, open space community centers, we need more of them. Mobility, safe and active mobility options, and also access to public spaces and services. So those elements that we touched about, that we just spoke about, are weaved in with our community element. And again, health is one of our core values. So all these different things that we heard, we've integrated into the, into this document as we've gone along for this past five-year journey. Historic preservation was another topic we heard a lot about. Preserving architectural heritage. I know Commissioner Morrissey is very interested in that one. Uh, ensuring new development respects and is compatible with the existing development community. Uh, maintaining unique character of projects, preserving our historic buildings through creative uses such as adaptive reuse. So what have we done? We have a new historic preservation element that addresses all these concerns. Alternative transportation, how are we gonna get to and from the city here? Safe environment for pedestrians and cyclists, for example. Uh sidewalks and curbs, make sure they're ADA compliant. Uh walkable neighborhoods, improving our transit systems, all these things we've heard again as we've done all this outreach. So we have a mobility element, which is currently called the, the circulation element. The mobility element is focused on multimodal circulation systems throughout the city. Parks and recreation is a big one. We've heard it a lot. I've been here for 33 years. Open space has been an issue since day one and I walked in the doors here. Lock of community centers and libraries, not enough open space, providing more services and provide safer and better maintained uh parks and open spaces. Those are the things we heard. So what are we doing? We're working with Parks and Rec to complete the Parks and Rec master plan. And we've also included some of these issues here within our open space element, land use element, community element and other elements here to kind of generate and put these uh comments into these elements here. And economic prosperity, we need to grow. We need to make sure that our general fund is, is, is primed and pumped and ready to generate some revenues so we can provide all these resources and provide these programs to the community. So we're looking to attract communities, uh businesses. We're looking to be sure that funding is distributed for commercial uh improvements uh citywide. Capitalizing tourism, we're just right around the corner from Disneyland and Anaheim Stadium and the Mighty Ducks, what do you call it, the, the arena and the Honda Center. So let's capitalize on tournament, on that tourism, excuse me. And invest in programs that assist low-income residents. Some of the things we heard and we're really focusing on that through our economic prosperity element. So those are some of the things that we heard through this outreach and we heard a lot of really good feedback from our community. Quickly, timeline of events, as Min said, we started back in 2015 when the city council said, planning, go forth and update your, your, yours, your constitution for land use development. And here we are today with this, uh, a few more meetings to go for this general plan adoption. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over for a few minutes to Melanie McCann. She's gonna walk you through the, the elements of the general plan and she'll go through a little more detail uh with these documents and then I'll be back a little bit later to talk about the environmental impact report. Melanie?
Yes, Vince, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me, Vince?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So someone will need to scroll the um PowerPoint for me because I think each of the, there you go. Um, so feel free to keep it going. Thank you. So um, planning commissioner, you've seen this um, this outline at prior study sessions, but just for the whole general public and as a refresher, the document is um divided into three volumes, uh the different, uh, the 11 elements. And each of them includes the community considerations, which would be the issues and the um, the values that the community uh shares. Then we'll have the policy framework, which is the goals and policies. Then the, the important implementation actions on how we're going to accomplish things. And then each of the elements typically has figures and tables. So you see a sample here of a table of content. Next slide, please. Thank you. So one of the um, the goals of this particular element, as you look through it, you'll see it's very visual. There's a lot of pictures and that was intentional to make it user-friendly and um really have the element focused on the heart of the policies and the goals and the actions and then um kind of have some creative visual expression. Next slide. Right, and then this would be a page from the policy framework. So that includes goals and policies. And as you can see on the right are the five values that Min and Vince mentioned. So we intentionally went back and made sure that each of these values were integrated in a variety of policies and actions. The one on the page that circles, it's a little hard to see, but on the um equity icon, it has a small green EJ and that further reflects that that particular policy not only resonates equity, but it, it meets the criteria of SB 1000 and supports environmental justice improvement. Next slide. So here's a sample implementation page. So the, the dark purple there, if you will, is the goal. And then below it are the various in, actions that help achieve that goal. And again, there's a little icon on the left that has EJ on it and this particular page has quite a number of actions that help support um environmental justice in a variety of ways. And on the right, there's the, the city agency and the timeline targeted for completion for that particular action. So that, that's our implementation plan example. So now I'll very briefly go through the other elements, um, there's the, the 11 elements. So the first one is the community element and its intention is to focus on our uh, our recreation, our community services, health and wellness. And um, just as a, to verbally share it with you, one of the actions in here in this element is to establish an ad hoc committee of stakeholders to give ongo, to create an ongoing environmental justice, community engagement program. So we acknowledge that we, communication with our community is a long-term, ongoing um important effort and that we want to include all the different stakeholders, the um Orange County Environmental Justice, the Madison Parks, the um, the representatives from the environmental justice neighborhoods. And we want to all work together to keep this conversation going and keep improving um our communication and working together in unity to make these positive changes. Um, the next element is the mobility element and that's the blueprint for how we um have people and um goods moving. And this includes, just as an example, two master plans. One relates to our streets and uh that might include a um reclassification of the street to reduce the vehicle lane. And it also includes a bikeway network that has introduced a new term for us, cycle tracks, which are, what you're seeing now, we're formally introducing into our circulation element, those protected bike lanes that you see, uh, that make folks a lot more comfortable um in biking and hopefully open the door for us to be a more sustainable community and um less dependent on our vehicles. Next slide. As Vince mentioned earlier, um, economic prosperity, prosperity element is critical um to have business and economics so that we can support all the different um actions and uh programs that are needed for our community. So um, this one really is important as far as reinforcing a diverse economic base in our community, businesses that are um, have, that are, are greeted, if you will, by a friendly business environment and um, and encouraging businesses that provide community benefits to our citizens as well. And then the next element is the public services element. And that talks through the various infrastructure components and public services. It um, it talks about an action that um, that our Public Works Agency does annually and that is a water quality report that's shared with the community um and um affirms the quality of our water. So next slide. Another one of our elements is the conservation element. It's one of the required, uh, one that's required by the state. And it identifies our natural resources and open space and a variety of things to keep our, the quality of our um, our community. Uh, one of the implementation actions in the conservation element actually has to do with environmental justice and it has to do with health risk criteria. I'm just gonna read it briefly. It says establish criteria for requiring health risk assessment for existing and new industries, including the type of business, threshold and scope of assessment. And review existing and establish new regulations to reduce and avoid increased pollution near sensitive receptors, which would be residential and schools, particularly within the environmental justice area boundaries. So that's one example of, with working with the um, the environmental justice groups, we've worked together to have some of our policies and actions evolve and be strengthened and that would be one example. Um, the next category or element is open space, which is very important in our community. And as Vince mentioned, uh, a key opportunity is the Parks Master Plan, which um, uh, is anticipated to take approximately one year, but it is an opportunity to work again with community, environmental justice communities and neighborhoods and have lots of conversation around um how we can make improvements to our community and how we address our open space and park needs. Next slide. So the um, the next two elements are the noise element and it establishes noise levels for the community and prepares, there's a, a map that shows contours and uh trying to find that balance of um mitigating uh noise, um but allowing residential to be close enough to transportation so that we have a healthy, sustainable balance. And then the next element is the safety element, deals with seismic safety and um earthquakes, floods, um and hazardous materials. And um, I'll touch on one of our actions related to that, um, that uh it also overlaps with the land use element, but as far as hazardous materials, um, we've added a new uh requirement or an implementation action that is to update our development review process application to require um applicants to clarify what the prior use was of the property and to clarify if there's any need for remediation on the site so that that's addressed from the very beginning and we can make sure that that development of the site um is, is cleared of any hazardous materials. Next slide. So a lot of folks are pretty excited that we have a historic preservation element now. And um, it identifies our existing historic resources and it identifies a plan to improve that and embrace our culture, um, not just our physical buildings, but also our culture and our history. And um, one of the things that's involved in that is um expanding our survey of potential other structures that could be added to our local historic list. And in particular, in working with um Pennington Park Representatives, we um adjusted one of the actions so that it notes that those surveys will begin with um looking at our focus areas. So for instance, South Main, where there is certain history and uh context and such that we would look and survey those areas first so we make sure there's no missed opportunities. The next um element is the urban design element and that's one that its intention is to um kind of pull together the finer grain of our community and make sure that it's, it's a, you have a wonderful sense of entry, uh to create the safe environment, a walkable environment, and it complements the land use element and some of our other um, our other elements on creating a healthy, beautiful physical environment. Next slide. Thank you. So the last element to touch on is the one that, that Vince mentioned earlier, is the one that folks are, um, a lot of people are the most familiar with and that's our land use element. And um, it identifies the long-range vision for where our physical development will be located and it um, it creates our identity and our, our vision. So our land use element, as it moves forward, we believe represents the values of sustainability, um, encouraging transit-oriented development and um kind of recreating areas of opportunity so we can um continue our, the, down the path of economic prosperity by housing for our, our community and um, and again, being sustainable in a, in a new way. So, next slide, please. So um, what I'll, what we'll do now is uh, um, uh, this particular map shows the five focus areas and then I'll just walk you very quickly through each of the five focus areas, uh, as I believe you're familiar from some of the prior study sessions. So for, at a quick glance, what you're looking at is the areas in the fuchsia pink are the new focus areas. There are five of them. And as you, you see the map, they somewhat connect the other areas in blue, which are existing land use plans or specific plans that are in place. So it allows things to be tied a bit um more comprehensively. And again, a lot of these are along transit corridors. Next slide, please. So the first area is the South Main um corridor and the intent is to um revive and kind of reenliven South Main with some improvements to complement um the streetscape that Public Works has been working with the community on the South Main plan to, to do and to continue it as a more active and dynamic streetscape and allow more, um, a little bit more intensity on the streets, but um still keep the historic character and the um, the uniqueness there. And then of course, support um transit pedestrian. Uh, again, Main, um, Main Street is a, has a good transit line on that as well, so it's plenty to complement that. And um, this is the colored map on the left- And this is, the colored map on the left shows the land use designation. And the ones I'll draw your attention to are the kind of light pink color, and that's what we call urban neighborhood. So that is, right now that area is commercial. Urban neighborhood allows moving forward, those areas to have residential, not just commercial. It's intended to be no more than 20 dwelling units per acre as a residential component and no higher than three stories. So the areas in yellow on either side are single-family residential is the designation now, those are not proposed to be changed. And again, when we do our zoning as a, as a next phase, we would have design standards that allow for an appropriate transition from a two-story, single-family environment to the next one. So here's a quick example. This is on Broadway and Warner, this is the existing situation. And I was talking about the urban neighborhood, but this was actually an example of another use called flex block. And so this is an industrial flex that at the south part of Main, this would allow for a transition of up to three stories and would allow for clean industrial. Next slide. And here we have Grand Avenue and Seventeenth. Again, this is an opportunity to take some underused, underutilized areas on Grand and Seventeenth and create them into urban villages that would serve the surrounding neighborhoods and the community. They are intended to be respectful of the existing surrounding neighborhoods, but activate a little bit more intensity to make good use of the transit, the Grand Avenue transit and some sustainable development. Next slide. So here's a quick visual. The area that's in the lighter pink is what we're calling urban neighborhood. This area has actually been, has evolved a bit. In our earlier slides, it started at 40 deuce per acre, but we now have it, it's adjusted so that at the northern area, it is at 30 deuce per acre. And then around the Santa Clara area, it goes to 40 deuce per acre, actually 30 deuce per acre, and then back to 40 as it gets closer to Seventeenth on the primary arterial there. So once again, it's an opportunity to over time, to transition these uses to be mixed use and allow for more development that's complementary and respectful of the surrounding area. The dark purple at the bottom is intended, just across from the train station, and is intended to allow a higher density with up to six stories of development as those users would change out in the long, long term. Next slide. This is the example of looking towards Grand Avenue inside the single-family neighborhood. And this, next slide. With the development standards that are proposed, or the height limitations that are proposed, this is potentially a visual of what it could look like, of course, with different types of architecture. The beige color that you see right next to those green trees is actually about a two-story structure that would be next to single-family. And then it gets, and then it's set back further for the higher, higher levels. Thank you, next slide. This is the West Van Anna Boulevard area. Again, this is along our Orange County streetcar, so it allows some opportunity for a little bit more transition of density next to those transit stops. And most importantly, it allows for a transition of the industrial area there to what we're calling industrial flex, which would transition from the industrial uses that are not as clean and not as appropriate for next to residential to allow them to transition out and encourage maker spaces and more creative use of that area. Next slide. So here's a visual on this map. And everything you see here is not being proposed to be changed, but that kind of the light purple area that you see there, that's the area that would be transitioned from traditional industrial to flex, industrial flex. And then around, you see the dark blue squares, those are the stops for the transit for the Orange County streetcar. And as you see the purple around those, it would be the opportunity to have mixed use residential around those nodes for real convenient access to the stops over time. And then there's another use that's being introduced, the what we're calling corridor residential. It's the, just to the right of the red square, the darker ground, that would be allowing 30 dwelling units to acre, to the acre with a maximum of three stories. Next slide. Here's a visualization of before and after. So this is on the edge of a residential area that's now industrial. And then the far distance, the end of that street would be where the streetcar would actually be. This is an example where you could have a clean industrial that provides some open space and visual complement to the adjacent residential and is an amenity for the area, but allows for that transition from the, to a clean industrial creative space. Next slide. Then we have our 55 and Dyer area. These are some visuals of what that could look like, a little, a little more intense, allows for multi-story office and industrial space. As you'll see when we get to the map, it's adjacent to the 55 freeway, so it's a great opportunity for potentially some anchor corporate offices and kind of, kind of the image, you know, some special marketing and imaging along the city. And if you go to the next slide, we'll see how that would play out. So as you can see, the 55 freeway cutting at a diagonal, the area in darker purple as proposed would allow for mixed use in what we call district center. The dwelling units would be 90 dwelling units per acre and six-story level. And then the lighter purple that we're calling industrial flex, that's where it would allow 10 stories for research and development, clean manufacturing, corporate headquarters and campuses. It would allow that opportunity and to really play off of the proximity to the 55 freeway. In addition, the general commercial, which is an existing, the red designation, is, in that area, it's, you can keep the slide as it is, it would allow for higher density of commercial. Citywide, we have a .5 ratio, but in this particular area, we would increase it to allow it to complement the other urban flavor. So here's what we have existing, and then this would be, in theory, what would be allowed through the changes of the designation. So you'd see you'd be going down the 55 freeway and you'd have quite the presence there along the freeway. And then further away from the freeway, the opportunity for mixed use. Last but not least, we have South Bristol. So here's some visuals of what you think the vision could be. As you know, it's adjacent to South Coast Plaza and the, some of the arts centers there. So we capitalize off of that, introduce mixed use and provide opportunities though still to be mindful and respectful of the adjacent low-density residential and have an appropriate transition. Next slide. So here's the quick visual of that area. The darker purple is the district center, which is the more intensive urban setting. And the area closest to Sunflower, the south part, the lower part of the picture, would actually allow up to 25 stories, kind of like the images that you just saw before. And then the area that's in urban neighborhood, again, to be more complementary to the adjacent uses, the single-family and the multifamily, would allow maximum of three stories and be closer to 30 dwelling units per acre. Next slide. So here we have a visual looking south on Bristol. And with those new general plan designations, it would allow the opportunity to have a more dynamic urban center. And again, Bristol is one of our key transit corridors and OCTA as well, is looking at even more additional improvements to the service on Bristol Street for the future. Vince, would you like to transition into the, to the build-out table?
Sure, Melanie. Thank you very much for walking us through those elements.
Okay.
This here, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission, is the build-out table that's within the EIR that you have there. And basically what it says there is, we're looking at about, with this plan that you saw here, about additional, almost 18,000 units that could be built. In theoretically, theoretically could be built in the city. The current general plan that we have has a lot of areas in the city's own district center, for instance, the main place mall area and down south part of town, but we got nowhere near the density plan back then. So when we say 18,000 units, it's really more theoretical, but probably unlikely that the whole city would build out as the way the plan is, is designed. So what you're looking at there is 18,000 additional units, couple of million square feet of additional square footage, office, retail, industrial square footage, and about almost 7,000 jobs. And I'm looking at the growth, that center table too, that growth one there, under focus areas where, where I'm really looking at. The other numbers there talks about the existing plan, what's existing out there in the ground right now. And then the build-out takes into consideration our existing plans. For instance, if we maxed out the metro east overlay zone, which we saw earlier today, then we could have, in theory, an additional almost 24,000 units if the total city was built out per the existing plans plus the focus areas. And then you're looking at about 15 million square feet and about 35,000 jobs. Again, all theoretical. But when you have a project such as theoretical, such as this, you need to do an environmental impact report. And the difference between this EIR and the one on the Bowery, the Bowery one that you saw a few months ago was a, a project-level EIR, which analyzed specific project impacts. The Bowery, we knew how many units it was going to be, where their access points were at, and how much traffic they're going to generate. So we could do a EIR that focused on that type of project. This one here is actually opposite because it's such a, it's a plan, it's a vision plan, it's a program-level EIR. And it studies the theoretical impacts. So this EIR, we had it set out for its 45-day review period, it went out in early August. And during that 45 days, we got a lot of feedback from our community saying they need more time to review the document. So the document was, the time period to review was extended by another 20 days. So finally, on October 6th was the comment period, which was about 65-day comment period. During that time, we received over 50 comment letters on the EIR and the general plan amendments themselves. And our consultant place works responded to all those comments, and those were emailed to you last week, the link to those comments. So the EIR itself reviewed 18 different topics. And everything from aesthetics to air quality to land use to population to greenhouse gases, a list of 18 different topics. And out of all those topics they analyzed, four were identified as significant and unavoidable, just couldn't mitigate them. And those were impacts to air quality, which you typically find that on pretty much every development project because of the, the standards we have there for the air basin, greenhouse gas, which is related to air quality, cultural resources and population housing. So those four were deemed that they were significant and unavoidable and would need a statement of overriding considerations. The EIR also studied alternatives within the document as required by law, everything from a no build to a reduced build alternative. So based on the presentation we're giving you today, the background on the elements themselves, the review of the environmental impact report, we're recommending that the planning commission recommend that the city council certify EIR 2020-3, as well as approve the general plan amendment 2020-6 for the comprehensive update to the general plan. That concludes our presentation, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Again, Min, myself, and Melanie and Ricardo are available to answer your questions. And we also have the consulting team, as well as other city team members, available to handle any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Vince. Thank you, Melanie. Thank you, Min. I'll start out. Do any of the commissioners have any questions of staff? I'll start with Commissioner Garcia.
And then at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Morrissey? Commissioner Morrissey? Have we lost Commissioner Morrissey?
Sorry, I was muted. I apologize.
Ah, that's okay.
I'll start again. Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. Appreciate all the outreach that's been done and presentations. I still have a few questions I'd like to ask. I noticed the EIR had, you know, it looks like we're planning on adding 75,000 residents over the course of a period of 20, 25 years. And it noted that there was no impact to our water sources, and, but there also was a table that said there would be shortages during a dry year. Anybody comment on that? It seems kind of contradictory.
Commissioner Morrissey, I'll be the, the traffic person for comment. Joanne Hadfield, if you're on the line, if you can please address Commissioner Morrissey's question regarding...
Sure, yeah. This is, this is Joanne Hadfield with Placework, so she's a project manager for the environmental impact report. We retained as a subconsultant Fesco Engineering, and they did extremely detailed infrastructure studies both for physical infrastructure and for water supply. And we worked with the city's water department. The starting base for that is the urban water management plan. We went back and forth and back and forth, and it's really quantified in the technical report. I don't know, the urban water management plan makes you look at the worst peak year and the worst three years, and so that's what it looks like. But the study was very conservative and found that there was sufficient water. So I've been a few months since I've looked at any of that detail. I don't know if that answers your question, but it was, it's done by Fesco Engineering, it's in the technical report, and the city's water department reviewed it in detail and conferred with the findings.
Well, I guess my question, I was wondering what classified, what constituted a dry year and how often they would occur. So I understand, you know, on drought times, there will be shortages, but I'm not sure what we were anticipating. It seemed kind of unclear as to what a dry year was.
I can look that up while we're having other discussions. I have to refresh my memory. No, we look at three years and then the peak year. We didn't have any finding that was of concern for water supply sequel law.
Tom, any other?
Yes. Just a general concern regarding, you know, it's the letters we received about environmental justice and people having opportunity to weigh in on that. Make sure we've given everybody the opportunity they needed. It sounds like we have, so I'm not really clear... It sounds like we have, so I'm, I'm not really clear. Maybe staff can comment on what the concerns are that we've received.
So Commissioner Morrissey, this is Mintai. The concern that we have received and the feedback that many residents has provided, city staff relating to environmental justice, is that in this current situation of a pandemic, it is very difficult for engagement of the public in discussion on environmental justice due to the inability to have engagement in person. Public outreach for city government, you know, in the best of time is challenging. And in COVID, it's even more challenging. However, in spite of this, we as the city staff, as outlined in our presentation, was able to reach out to the community very early on in terms of when we started with the general plan and discussing all of the issues that the community have of concerns. The five core principles that were adopted and approved in the beginning, as I mentioned, that sets out the guidance for formulation of all policies, all have to do with issues and concerns that are related to environmental justice, social equity, issues of the environment. So these kind of issues were addressed and discussed very early on. And as we went through the process of the refining of the document and evaluating the changes in the state law in 2019, we were determined that we need to do a sound check with the community on what we have done so far and making sure that there, there are issues that we have addressed and we have heard correctly during that process. That's when we hear in the mid 20, 2020, after we started with pandemic, that the community felt that they were not as involved as, as, as they think they should, you know, it could be, could have been done. And therefore, had started to, for staff and of the city to delay the hearing process for additional input. However, as I mentioned, in spite of COVID, we have gone out to the community on several meetings we've had to the general community as well as working with specific neighborhoods such as Logan, Madison Park. City staff, including city manager, myself, and several council members have also toured some of these neighborhoods and talked with the neighborhood leaders on the type of issues throughout our community. We also have a very good vehicle for working and getting feedback from our community is that through our neighborhood initiative program. Through this program, we're able to reach residents, reach neighborhood leadership, reach neighborhood association at the grassroots level. And through that process, we have been able to not only get input, but also reach out and share with the community on what's going on. So while the community feels and, and expressed concern on environmental justice, we believe that we have gone above and beyond what SB 1000 require. Of course, the question is always asked, can we be better? I think we can always be better, but considering what has been done so far, what's required by the law, what the reflection of the document and the various goals and policies and initiatives are being drafted, it's very responsive to what the community is asking for. But in summary, that's what the community is saying, is that in, in light of COVID, we need, the city needs to provide additional opportunity for community input throughout the 21 neighborhoods and the 17 census tracts that are considered to be disadvantaged communities. I hope that answered the question.
Yeah, I was, I was, yes, you did. Thank you very much.
Mr. Morrissey here, Commissioner Vince Fergoso, just to add on to Min's comments. Thank you, Min. But again, this is really just the first step in the whole outreach process. A lot of the comments that we've heard is, well, they want more time, they want more time. And this is just the beginning of the outreach efforts with, with all these disadvantaged communities and per SB 1000. We have several implementation actions that we need to go out there and still continue to outreach to the community in order to develop some code and development standards. So again, this is, this is just day one of probably day 1,000. We're going to be out there with the, for the community for the next several years talking about environmental justice. So thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm reading through the documents. I appreciate all the work that's gone into that as well as, you know, I had other comments regarding our historic resources and open space, and it looks like that's been addressed in the general plan and plans to increase our quality of space and protect our historic resources. So I think that's all great. I'm really excited about it. So I don't, I don't have any further comments at this time.
Okay, Tom?
Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Nguyen?
Uh, no question. Thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
Uh, no question. Thank you.
Commissioner Fan?
No question. Thank you.
Vice Chair Contras Leo?
Yes. So I just want to confirm that the topic and issue about open space is going to be looked at more in depth once the general plan is passed. That will instigate the Parks and Rec Master Plan to begin with a hired consultant, and that'll take about, I think there's like a year to decide for that. Is that correct?
You are correct.
Correct. Now, in doing that, will some of the environmental justice issues also be looked at while looking at open space?
Absolutely.
And in regards to affordable housing, how many projects do we have in the pipeline now that are affordable projects or have some type of element of affordable housing that are kind of on hold due to the general plan not being passed?
We don't have any housing development projects that I'm aware of that are on hold due to the general plan not being approved. Unless there's been any recent development discussion at the staff level, I'm not aware of any. And are you aware of anything?
I am not, Min, at all. I know we have a few projects that are going to pay some, the house, the HOOF fee that are going to be pulling permits shortly, but I don't, I can't think of any other projects in the pipeline.
Okay, good to know. And does this, by, by passing the general plan, does that help get revenue going again for the city? Or it's, it's just laying out a plan? It's, it doesn't affect that?
So the general plan is exactly what it is, is a general, a document of general policies and implementation action that provide an overarching goal with a, you know, a 60,000 foot level view of different types of concerns and of issues with the city. Then the next step where the heavy lifting is going to occur is when we come in and follow up with specific action, an example such as the land use element. We will have to come up to follow up with updating of the zoning code in order for us to start addressing many of the issues that the general plan at the policy level direct us to, to evaluate and to implement. Another example is the master park plan, as you discussed. That will also be another implementation action that is a follow-on action that will provide granular level of information as to the location of the park, what is the city's need, where will additional parks be moved. And so that is also another part of implementation. The general plan, as we mentioned, is a visionary document that is a 25 year span. And it's also a living document. And as we move forward, we will continue to provide updates annually. And if necessary, we'll need to make any adjustment to better reflect community values as, as that changes over time.
So then when the zoning codes and guidelines get brought up and revised and established, that would be the time for, I would assume, council or, I, I don't know, planning commission, but council, I would assume, that is an opportunity to then protect communities in terms of, you know, not head, continuing density in, in certain areas that are just at capacity. Would that be a, a time to do that?
The zoning update is definitely a time where the community and the planning commission as well as the city council will have an opportunity to collaborate and discuss how to implement the vision of the general plan. As the general plan lays out the vision for each area, the zoning code will follow that up with actual regulations that addresses how a property or a property-specific development criteria is.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to go back to what Cynthia was just alluding to in some of her questions, and that is, is that at this point in time, we've had, we have a number of projects that, it was six or seven that we, we changed the, the way that they were being treated with regards to who. And that none of those projects that we're talking about at this point in time that are in the pipeline or, or part of the pipeline are going to be impacted one way or another with regards to the, the, the general plan. I mean, essentially, everything has been done. Those are all, those have all been basically ready to go, shovel ready, just have to get the permits going. Is that a correct statement?
You are correct. And one such project is the latest in Sunflower project. They are coming in and will be pulling permits next week as a result of the change.
Right. So we're not, we're not holding any projects up at this point in time. We're just, we're, we're just basically, yeah. Exactly. Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions of staff at this point in time? Okay, thank you for that. What we'll do at this point in time is, Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this, on this subject?
Uh, yes, Chair, we did receive several comments. I've tallied those up. We received 53 comments, one in support. We have three in opposition, 37 requesting postponement, and then 12 general comments relating to corrections to the environmental document and/or the elements of the general plan.
Okay, so 53, one in support, three opposed?
Correct. 37
37 postponed?
And 12 general comments relating to either the environmental and/or elements of the general plan.
Okay. All right. Good enough. At this point in time, we will open up the public hearing. Madam Secretary, could you let us know on the calls who's, who's on the line?
Yes. So Chair, we do have several callers in the queue. The first one is Thrive Santa Ana. Please state your comment and your position. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Luis Armento. I'm calling with Thrive Santana, our local community land trust. I did notice that despite conversations that we have had with city staff, I didn't see any references to community land trusts in the general plan, which is unfortunate. I do want to also recognize and acknowledge the hard work that it has taken to get to this point. I know that a general plan, like the presentation said at the beginning, is a very, very important document. And it is because of such importance that I think that we should not rush the approval of the general plan. We, as community members, have, have seen the coming together of this document. And I must say that I'm not convinced that it's ready to go. I see a lot of important issues, especially around some of the anti-displacement measures that we have proposed. Do the city are not really strong enough yet in, in the general plan. There is a great deal of deference that was paid to developers in this general plan. You have the example of Mike Hara's one Broadway project which has its own governing code. And I don't think the same deference has been paid to move the community's ideas and the community's concerns around environmental justice and around anti-displacement. And, and I know as someone that, that works at community outreach, that it's not just about the number of meetings that you do. And I do appreciate that, that the city has learned a lot about, you know, about reaching out to the community, but there's still a long way to go. And it's not just about hosting meetings, it's actually about incorporating the community's concerns in, 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 in concrete policies and in concrete action. And I think that if community members are expressing, you know, concerns about the current draft of, of this general plan, which, as was mentioned, is our, is our guiding document for the next 25 years, then I think that we need to, and, and take the time necessary. So I would like to oppose the approval of the general plan and, and ask for the city to, to just give it a, a little bit more time so that we can incorporate some of these important ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Excellent.
Caller with the last four digits, 8444. Please unmute yourself and state your name and position on the matter, please.
Excuse me? Am I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, who is this? Hi there. Yes, 844. All right. Hi, my name is Fidel Moreno, and I'm come, and I'm calling to, to ask, to ask this commission to, to consider not voting on this at this hour, to, to, to vote on this on a different date. You know, it's, based on the presentation, it's, it's pretty ob, it's pretty obvious that the, that the general plan is very influenced by the deep pockets of developers. And I truly doubt actually that this, that this actually does not pass tonight. I, I don't think you'll take our advice because I'm pretty confident that every commissioner, commissioner here has received a phone call or a message from the councilmen or councilwoman to ensure that this does pass tonight. Because essentially, this passing essentially greenlights the future opportunities for these council members to receive campaign funds from these, these deep pockets, especially to the three members who will not be returning to the diet. They need to ensure that they have to find a way to stay involved politically. And I know for a fact that this is all it is. And so in regards to the, in regards to your plan, at least the city, if, if you're going to present this, present it in a way where you actually want to portray Santa Ana in a lightful manner. I see in the portrayal of South Main Street, when you want to see what the, what can be possible, you still had the utilities, the poles still on the photo. You didn't even manage to, to edit them in a way that you would actually underground utilities. And this is no surprise because this is the same city government that basically did a half, half job on Bristol Street from Santa Boulevard to Warner, to Washington Avenue when undergrounding, undergrounding the utilities on the Bristol whitening. And it just looks, it doesn't, it doesn't look, it doesn't flow. It doesn't look good. And essentially, this is just another job for individuals to really take advantage of the community and take advantage of the city. And so in regards to turning over for, for developers, don't turn over for them. If I do have to commend someone, I want to commend Commissioner Garcia tonight for at least, I believe it was Garcia, for at least wanting some, some, some more, some new change in the development on, on Fort Street, on the other side of the five freeway. You know, when they say that it's not feasible, of course it's feasible. They just don't want to tell you because it's going to cost more. And if they really want to do business in Santa Ana, they'll want to do business here. Where, where else are they going to find a property adjacent to an interstate, especially the five freeway in Southern California at such a size? They won't. Especially in downtown Orange County, if they say that, that it's not even found anywhere else in the county, well, And thank you for taking my call, and please do not pass this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the last four digits, eight, four, seven, seven. Please unmute yourself, state your name, and state your position on the matter.
I was eight, four, seven, seven, I was having a problem with the phone there. I agree that some of the things needed to be looked at on this issue. The final environmental impact report really isn't in sync with the proposed general plan update, which was just, the final was issued just last week or so, and the update to the general plan, I understand, is still being tweaked on. So I would like to see some final documents that show that the two are actually in sync with each other, and something that we can really get our hands around and look at. I do find that some of the things that they've done since the community comments started a while back, the environmental justice, they've included more information on the general plan that shows where the environmental justice issues are. But I'm still concerned with the fact that the open space is not really addressed. And if open space is gonna be addressed in the park master plan, I would like to know if we will go back and tweak these focus areas to show that open space can be incorporated into these focus areas, instead of just making it a developer's handbook to allow them to go ahead and build three-to-five-story building complexes. We are dense. We need open space. It's been brought up many, many times, and I would like to see that incorporated. It's just unfortunate that the comprehensive general plan does not include the park master plan, nor does it include the housing element. We should have included the housing element update and then revised that in a year as well, if we're able to tweak on things. So I'd like to see some more changes occur. Thank you.
How you doing?
Caller with the last four digits, three, one, nine, three. Please unmute yourself, state your name and your position on the matter.
Yes, hi, my name is Erica Gonzalez, here again, a community organizer, small business owner, educator, parent, and a lifelong Santeranaer. I would like to oppose the general plan and request the postponement of this acceptance of the update until sufficient community engagement is completed, as required under SB 1000. The general plan has been under construction by the city since 2014, and if you have spoken, and you have spoken with less than 10% of the population, the lack of transparency and community engagement has been a topic of conversation throughout this entire process. You mention it in your response to the district attorney letter that you received earlier in October regarding their concerns surrounding this entire process, that you have hosted 40 meetings, but those meetings were held with a general plan advisory group, which was comprised of 17 members. Only two were from a community grassroots, were from a community or grassroots organization, and more than half of the members were part of the housing and planning commission at one point or another, developers and business owners. As a member of Ward Six, a ward that is deeply impacted by several environmental injustices, I also live on the South Main Street corridor, and my business is on Main Street. We have a high level of lead contamination that is not reflected at all in your, in your report. I am deeply concerned with the lack of community involvement at all steps of this process. I, along with several other community members, which I would like to applaud, because those last comments were fire, they called you guys out. You know, we have voiced our concern time and time again, with little to no response from this board. We have spoken out against this plan, argued that you have failed to establish a plan that truly reflects the needs of the existing community. I say existing because we know what you guys are planning. You want to displace us. I don't see any green at all in this update. No greenery, just steel, just buildings. How many times do we have to say it in how many different languages, at how many, at how many different meetings? We don't want more development. We don't need more development. We are already the densest city in Orange County, the densest city, okay? Now we have the district attorney reiterating the same concerns that we have all been voicing this entire time, and you flat-out lied in your response. I read the letter, you guys lied. We demand that this plan be postponed until the following has been successfully accomplished. Real community input and collaboration is completed with grassroots and community-based organizations, such as Orange County Environmental Group, Thrive Santana, Rise Up Willowick. There are so many groups you can work with that have roots within the community, and they were gonna voice and fight for them. A plan that addresses all of the environmental injustices affecting our city. A real community outreach completed to ensure that we address the real needs in every neighborhood. There's over 60 neighborhoods in Santana, and you guys have reached out to like three. A community oversight committee needs to be established to ensure that all these areas and neighborhoods throughout the city are included. And you need to establish more effective methods to contact community and ensure community engagement by providing materials in multiple languages and ensure proper translations. We see what you're doing. You need to be transparent. We know you're trying to get this passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica.
Caller with the last four digits, zero, seven, one, three. Please state your name and identify yourself and your position on the matter.
My name is Lionel Flores, lifelong resident of Santa Ana, also here calling to say that I am not in favor of the general plan as it is right now, and I am asking you to delay this until it is safe for more community engagement in person. As the previous caller stated, the policies that are put into place are very insufficient. The city talked about how this is the vision, but that's literally what it is. All of the policy they have implemented has been oversee this, analyze this, but there's no action into what they're actually gonna do to reduce pollution, like lead pollution, which were in the number one percent in the state of California. It was actually on count 34 last week. We're also in the top 5% for worst air quality in the state of California, but they still want to bring in 100,000 more people into one of the most populated cities in California. I don't know how that works. They say they're gonna add more parks, but they don't tell us what their goal is of how many. They don't want to show it to us. They say they're not gonna show it to us until this plan is approved. But how are we gonna know how many parks or green spaces they're gonna add if they don't even give us a number, an idea, if they don't show us a map of what they're trying to do? So I just want to reiterate that this should be delayed until it's safe for people to do so. And the main reason is because even the Department of Justice has now said that it is not recommended for the city to be moving forward with this plan while the current pandemic is affecting our community. Santa Ana is the number one, the highest, most affected community in Orange County because of the COVID pandemic, and the city is still choosing to go forward with this. The Department of Justice has said this general, this general plan is insufficient, the policy that has been implemented is not enough, and it should not be moved forward during the pandemic. So once again, I ask you to delay this plan. So please do not go against the residents' will. The residents have been asking for this up to this point. I've counted about 65 people against approving this plan and only one to approve it. So this is on record, and people will know, and people will see if you treat it, go forward with it, when the community said don't go forward with it. And the Department of Justice has also said do not go forward with this. And this is from the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you, Gomez.
Caller with the last four digits, two, seven, zero, three. Please state your name and your position on the matter.
Hello, my name is Hector Bustos, and I'm calling to urge the planning commission to delay the general plan process. The last time that this general plan was updated was over 30 years ago. The median age in Santana is about 28, so this general plan hasn't been updated since before the average person in Santana was born. So just let that sink in for a moment. How can we possibly be ready to adopt the general plan that will outline the future of young people in Santana for decades to come? You have failed to seek input from the group of individuals that this general plan will impact the most, young people. Before you made a formal decision today, I encourage you all to take a moment and really consider the efforts that the city and this planning commission has made to gather input from Santana youth, young professionals, young college graduates coming back to Santana. We cannot fast-track the process that has failed to fully address the environmental injustices that we see in Santana. Let's be the city that leads. For once, we have an opportunity to lead in environmental justice efforts here in Orange County. Santana can be the leader of these efforts, but first, we need to address issues like toxic lead exposure in the city. We need to start having an honest conversation about our priorities as a city, and how you as appointed commissioners are carrying out and expressing the real needs of our community. By expediting this process, you are working against the needs and the requests of the community that you so happen to represent. So think about who this general plan will impact the most, the youth. Are they sitting in your decision-making spaces? Have you done an adequate job in seeking input from them? If you answer no to any of those questions, then you probably aren't ready to move forward with this process. My future is at stake, the future of my peers is at stake, the future of my nephews and nieces is at stake, not yours. We need to be making decisions with the youth in mind always. We had historic voter turnout, the youth want to be involved in this process. The question is, what are you doing to make this information accessible to them? And staff mentioned that this has been a five-year journey. In my opinion, that's a shame, given that the average Santana resident has little to no knowledge on the general plan. So why are the survey respondent numbers in the hundreds, why are they not in the thousands? The input you received before 2020 should be taken lightly. We're now in the middle of a pandemic, priorities and the needs of Santana residents have changed. So let's not rush this process, let's reevaluate the needs of our community members. And Commissioner Fanu ran a campaign for city council regarding the need to engage with the Vietnamese community. But how much effort has really gone into doing this outreach to the Vietnamese community? I would say little to none. So please, I urge you to vote no, and let's delay this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Hector. Next, and next.
Manny Eskamia, please unmute yourself and state your position on the matter.
Okay, are you able to hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, thank you all. Happy week after the election. Like all of you, I think we're a little bit drained by the tension that is the post-election season here. And with that in mind, it's really just to say, the final VIR came out on November 3, and we've roughly had about four days to take a final look at it, and the comments and the responses. It's just a lot to go through, and I really do think it's a reasonable request to extend the amount of time to be reviewed. And I think we all need to be honest with ourselves in that, you know, part of this timeline is to basically get this general plan in front of the current council rather than the next council. So this timeline, to me, feels very rushed. I think that it's reasonable to, you know, to say and to laud the three-year outreach effort that we did on the policy priorities, although we're only getting about three months to actually review the document. And to me, that seems very unbalanced, and that there's just a lot of details that are gonna be missing. In fact, if you all take a look at the cover of the mobility element, there's literally a floating, what is it, lamp post in front of the trolley that is the cover of our mobility element. So there are details like that that are basically being overlooked because the document is being rushed. So when we can't even, you know, have a good Photoshop image on the cover of our documents, it really leads me to wonder what the actual contents are. And, you know, one example, I guess, would be at least one response to the new policy of no net loss of park space. I think it's worded in a way that makes it sound great, but it doesn't actually prevent the loss of open space, only existing parkland. So there are things like that that I think we need to strengthen, we need to just not take for granted. And I think we're going in the right direction, but it's, we still need more time to actually review the document in front of us, seeing again as the final version of that only came out about five days ago. And that's it. So thank you all, and I hope you vote the right way.
Thank you, Manny.
Caller with the last four digits, four, five, nine, one. Please state your name and your position on the matter.
My name is Brett Courtney. I'm an attorney with UC Irvine's Environmental Law Clinic here today on behalf of the Madison Park Neighborhood Association. MPNA opposes the staff recommendations and urges the planning commission not to adopt resolutions to approve the general plan update at this time. Environmental justice is enshrined in California law, and the cities are now required to include environmental justice-focused policies in general plan updates. The state's definition of environmental justice includes the meaningful engagement of the communities most impacted by pollution and other environmental burdens. Unfortunately, that meaningful engagement has not yet happened for the city's general plan update, which is why MPNA and other residents are demanding more time to engage. Though staff point to outreach efforts dating back several years, no EJ-focused outreach on the general plan occurred until May of this year, and all of that has been hindered by the COVID-19 pandemic. Clearly, staff often need to highlight every outreach effort to date that could possibly be related to environmental justice, even invoking MPNA's name several times. Yet the most basic request of environmental justice communities, more time to engage in the process, has been repeatedly ignored, time and time again. In letters, emails, and public hearings, and at the limited number of community meetings that have taken place, residents have implored the planning department to delay this process until after the pandemic is behind us, or at least until adequate engagement can be achieved. Importantly, this is the same position taken by California's Department of Justice's environmental justice bureau in a letter sent to the city, and the city has declined to take DOJ's recommendation. MPNA has submitted that letter on this item for your convenience. In fact, staff have told us that they've passed on the concerns of the community to elected officials, yet here we are this evening. It is not clear who city staff or city officials are afraid to account to, but it does not seem to be residents of Santa Ana. Now the city wants to rush through the general plan adoption in the middle of a pandemic during a lame duck session of city council. Santa Ana residents, and especially its environmental justice communities, deserve better than that. Now you have the chance to make it right. Please do not approve the general plan update without robust community engagement required by law and insisted upon by Santa Ana's residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Caller with the last four digits, two, three, zero, two. Please state your name and your position on the matter.
Hi, my name is Juan Goncalves. I'm a resident of the Memorial Park neighborhood, which is actually one of the EJ areas for the plan. I'm also a master of city planning student at UC Berkeley currently, born and raised Santerano. I just want to echo the previous opinions of the callers, saying that we need to slow this down, slow the process down. It actually quite surprises me that the planning department didn't mention the letter from the DOJ that's been mentioned from, by previous callers. I feel like it's a clear example that, you know, even at the highest levels of state government, this plan should not go forward. I'm looking at the document now. One part that comes to mind specifically is this, we are concerned that the EJ policies are not sufficient to reduce the unique and compounded health risks to EJ communities as required by SB 1000, nor do they adequately address the specific requirements of SB 1000. I feel like this is information that should have been included in the presentation, even if they, you know, obviously offered up some kind of solution towards it. You know, in my master of city planning education, we've been told again and again that community should be at the center of any kind of planning process. There really is no planning process without community. And so, just here- And so, just hearing all these different community groups and community members saying that the outreach hasn't been enough, that should be more than enough reason to slow down this process. And I'll just speak point-blank here and say that this obviously requires a high degree of humility. It's not easy to admit that, you know, all your educational background and your previous experience is not enough when it comes to engaging with the community, but at the end of the day, they're the biggest clients, they're the biggest stakeholders in all of this. And so if they're saying that this is not being done the right way, that this is not being done at the right pace, then you really have to self-reflect and think, gee, maybe we really need to go back to the drawing board and then think about this more clearly. And this should be the case for everybody at the planning department and everybody on the Planning Commission as well. So I just really implore you all to, you know, again, think about who is really going to benefit from this general plan, really keep community in the back of your mind, and lean in to everything that they're asking for and requesting, because at the end of the day, that's all that should matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you Juan.
Caller with the last four digits 6697, please identify yourself and state your position on the matter.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, yes, good evening, my name is Jose Reyes, and I'm the treasurer for the Madison Park Neighborhood Association. And in your presentation, you mentioned that you had held 60-plus meetings in the last five years. And I think I did, you know, more than my fair share of those meetings. And I just want to say, you know, something that Brett Courtney mentioned, is that, you know, you didn't start talking about environmental justice until May, and you did not reach out to Madison Park Neighborhood Association, it was the other way around. Madison Park Neighborhood Association reached out to you in April, and two weeks later, you responded by sending those flyers, you didn't respond to us, you responded by sending those environmental justice flyers in May of this year. So you've only been talking about environmental justice for six months. You know, you also mentioned that their environmental justice communities are 17 census tracts across 21 neighborhoods. You mentioned three: Madison, Logan, and Atisca Pilares. Whatever happened to the other 18? How did you reach out to the other 18 neighborhoods, including Memorial Park, like the previous talker, speaker was mentioning? So in your current policy and implementations, there are no timetables, no measurable goals. So for Madison Park Neighborhood Association in the southeast Santana, we want to know how and when are you going to remove the dirty industries from such a close proximity to the schools and our residential areas? These dirty industries are getting our kids and our elderly sick. We have a disproportionately a number of kids with asthma, because when they're playing on the school yards, they're breathing all kinds of pollutants, metal gases, you name it, particulate matter. And there's nothing in your plan and the policies and implementation review with you that tells us how and when are you going to start removing some of those industries away from schools, and how you're going to bring some clean industry, and how you're going to create those buffer zones. So delay the plan, and remember, no general plan without community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the last four digits 7862, please identify yourself and state your position on the matter. Caller with the last four digits 7862, please dial *6 to unmute yourself.
Good evening, my name is Ethan Lacon, and I am a certified law student with UC Irvine's Environmental Law Clinic, here today on behalf of the Madison Park Neighborhood Association. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the proposed general plan update. MPNA opposes the staff recommendations for the Planning Commission to adopt resolutions of approval at this time. I would like to start by reiterating comments that UCI Law's Environmental Law Clinic has already made on behalf of MPNA. The city should not adopt the general plan update because the city has not effectively engaged with its future communities. Ultimately, the city has only been able to reach a handful of the 17 EJ communities in Santa Ana. Despite the inadequacy of the city's efforts, some residents of EJ communities have offered feedback on how the city can better serve the EJ communities through the general plan update. In particular, the city should make every effort to solicit feedback from members of EJ communities who do not have assistance from professionals like the ELC. On October 30th, MPNA sent the planning department a letter detailing ways it can improve the EJ policies and actions in the general plan update, but the city has not updated the draft since receiving that letter. One straightforward way the city could improve nearly half of the 62 policies and actions that MPNA provided specific comment on is prioritize EJ communities or EJ areas in the policies or actions. For example, Conservation Element Action 1.6 states, "The city will coordinate with the South Coast Air Quality Management District to monitor existing air measurements and recommend new air measurements and locations." While it could start, the implementation action would be far better if the city explicitly committed to prioritizing EJ areas. After all, the areas with the worst air quality in the city should be the first to receive improved air monitoring capabilities. MPNA believes other policies and implementation actions need stronger commitments to addressing EJ issues as well. For example, Conservation Element Action 1.5 states, "The city will serve as a liaison for residents to identify potential emissions violations." However, if the city would commit to addressing incompatible land uses and the problems they create for EJ communities, the city can actuate real change in the lives of its residents. There are many more policies and actions that can be improved on, and many more good ideas the city can incorporate into its general plan update. Some are mentioned in the ELC's letter, but many EJ communities have not provided input because the city has not met its obligation to reach out to all of its most vulnerable residents and take the time to listen to them. For all these reasons, and those included in MPNA's letter submitted on this agenda item, we urge the Planning Commission not to recommend approval of the general plan update at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the last four digits 7024, please identify yourself and your position on the matter. Yes.
Great. Hi, my name's Sean Drexler. I am calling to oppose the general plan as it stands and to ask that you delay the general plan process until more community outreach is conducted, especially to communities identified as disadvantaged, and until the community's concerns are fully addressed, specifically with concerns environmental justice issues. It's pretty incredible that there was no mention of the lead soil contamination in the presentation. So, I guess a couple things to say about that. The city really needs to develop a public health action plan to properly address the urgent issue that toxic lead exposure poses to residents in the city. There need to be tenant protections for residents who seek action on toxic lead exposures. There needs to be free blood testing for residents who might have been exposed to lead. Like, this is bad. When recent, like, the lead concentrations in the soil were like more than 28,000 children reside, it was 80 parts per million, which is like, no level of lead is safe for children. But it was higher than that, which is the, like, the California Office of Environmental Hall of Hazards says that that's like, really, really dangerous for children. These are health risks that are unique to Santa Ana, this has been known for years. Even the Attorney General said that this timeline is unrealistic and not in line with the law. I want to echo, you know, things that a lot of the other callers said. I love that in the presentation, y'all name-dropped OCEJ and Madison Park Neighborhood Association, but they're like literally telling you, don't pass this tonight, don't approve it. So like, how are you going to brag about meeting with them, but then move along with it when they're telling you not to? I don't get it. So yeah, I just want to reiterate, a lot of people have given some really good advice on how to do better outreach. You said you engage with like, what, 700 residents or something? There's like 337,000 people in Santa Ana, so I think you can do a lot more. That's all I got to say. Yeah, do what everyone's been telling you to do. Thank you.
Thank you Sean.
Caller with the last four digits 0073, please state your name and your position on the matter. Caller with the last four digits 0073, please dial *6 to unmute yourself. All right, I might be having some technical difficulties there, we'll come back. Caller with the last four digits 1238, please state your name and your position on the matter.
Hello, hello? Good evening, Seth Sethwater, we are with the Kennedy Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to talk a bit about this issue. I want to echo a lot of the comments that have already been discussed by our partners. I think environmental justice also needs to think about, we need to think about it a different way. We are also creating opportunities in many areas where we are increasing housing and the housing opportunities, and we don't even have an assessment of what are some of the environmental constraints and issues in those projected five focus areas. So that's really concerning, aside from the environmental justice issues that we have today, we're creating more by not doing the upfront analysis and work. I also want to make sure that as we're working through this process, we acknowledge that there's a lot of inconsistencies with this general plan update proposal with, when it coordinates with the housing element, land use, and any other regulatory affordable housing provisions. It's very clear right now that there's an amendment, as you were dealing with this issue earlier, and some other proposals that came to you. The affordable housing ordinance is in limbo right now. Whether it applies, whether developers will create affordable housing or be required to, is a big question, and we have all these developments moving forward that are not complying with it. And in general, what's happening here with this general plan amendment is you're creating by-right development. As the previous applicant mentioned to you, we are providing zoning that allows developers to give densities and any other provisions for development for free, without requiring affordability. So this particular amendment will allow for by-right development that would exclude the application of the affordable housing ordinance that you have in place today. We ask that this commission not approve this and not consider it. It should go back to the community for more input on environmental constraints and issues that are impacting the community, but also for consistency with all the other elements, including the housing element that the city is about to embark on in update that will be due in 2021. So we should be looking, how do we align all these processes, and how do we align all these elements to make sure that we have consistency and that we are creating goals, and we are achieving those goals by having the policy in place at the same time and not rushing this. So please, do not move forward with this today and don't consider this. Ask staff to go back and do true community engagement when it's possible, when it's safe after the pandemic is over, and work with the community to make sure that community input is truthful and that it's also, in a way that it's going to be taking that feedback into the community. One last point, I think, as folks had mentioned earlier, a lot of community engagement has been mentioned by staff. I think one key issue that also has been brought up in every single meeting that I've been here has been affordable housing, and it's not reflected in many of these policies or documents that you have before you. So thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you.
Caller with the...
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, this is Sandra Pena Carmiento, 0073.
Thank you.
Okay, so, thanks for, thanks for coming back to me. I am a Santa Ana native and a resident of Pacific Park Eastside, and my position is that I also would recommend delaying approving the plan, just because it's so vague and so prone to, you know, manipulation. I know that staff, you know, I helped with the arts master plan, and, you know, the city set up to, you know, create these plans, and then they use them to, you know, plan out activities. So it needs to be really detailed and very specific, and I also agree with the other callers that we have a very bad pollution, you know, and toxic soil problem here, over here on the east side, and there should be some kind of lead abatement program recommended or something like that. So there's a lot of detail, also even with the historic resources, there's a lot of detail that still needs to be fleshed out. So I would recommend delaying the plan until next year. With that said, I wanted to talk about some of the, you know, planning issues that still need some attention here, I'm going to talk about four. First on South Main, there needs to be some kind of cultural inventory of our historic buildings. We have a lot of beautiful facades that give South Main a lot of character and are rooted in its history. We have intact art deco, craftsmen bungalows, we have beautiful Guji facades that are still intact. I mean, you know, you see these facades fully restored in places like Palm Springs, you know, that really value their architectural heritage, and we should too, because we're a very historic city. And next to San Juan Capistrano, I mean, we've been seeing with the native remains that are being found, you know, it was us and San Juan Capistrano, we were the two cities in Orange County for over 100 years. So it's very important that we are very specific and very active in safeguarding our cultural treasures. Okay, so that's for South Main, there needs to be a cultural inventory so that when you, you know, recommend things like, you know, forebuilding structures, you know, that these property owners know that they are limited with what they could do because of the, you know, historic quality of their building. Okay. Now moving on to a transportation project, like the OC Streetcar, I recommend that there be a public art component that showcases our neighborhood histories and local businesses. When there's a public transportation project like this, it's really important, it's a great opportunity to showcase our cultural diversity and the businesses in our city. So the OC Streetcar has, for example, 10 stops, and each of those stops...
Thank you Pena.
...corresponds, okay, I'm almost done, just corresponds to a different business. And then I also recommend that you convert, this is moving on, the area of First and Grant to Chesna to flex live-work industrial space because there are...
Pena, we need to, we need to, we need to get on to the next person.
I'm almost done, sir, and this is why everyone's recommending...
Everybody, everybody's got three minutes, and I apologize, but, you know, we've had a lot of people, and we have a lot of people still to talk, so if we can...
Okay, would it be helpful if I wrote these down to send to you, because these are areas that are not in the general plan?
Sure, write them down.
Okay, I would...
Write them down and send them...
...and hopefully that will be adopted, and thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you.
Caller with the last four digits 2781, please identify yourself and state your position on the matter. position on the matter.
Hi, am I muted now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Perfect, thank you. Hi, my name is Alex. I'm here with my wife, Alyssa. We both live and work in Santa Ana and work, I'm really, really thankful, actually. This is my first time doing a meeting like this, and I'm really, really thankful to hear all the different things that are going on, on the local government level. So thank you so much for, well, clearly all the hard work that's been put into this, this general plan, as well as taking the time to listen to our concerns. You know, I bike down to work every day on Bristol, and when I see these pictures of really, really nice, you know, bike lanes that are hopefully going to be coming, it's really, really easy for me to look at something like this and go, oh, man, this is, this is really, really exciting. With that being said, though, I would also like to request that you consider opposing this plan until more robust assurances for affordable housing can be assured. So I work for a church and my wife works for a hospital. She's a social worker at OC Global Medical Center. And we both pretty consistently interface with the homeless population. And, and, you know, it would be really, really nice for me to have great bike lines, but, or bike lanes, but every single day I pass by three or four unhoused people on my way to work. And one of them is named Harold. Everybody knows him. He, he sits on a bus stop and, and I can see people every single day passing by. They, they know him really, really well. But the fact that, you know, we are considering all these possible innovations and developments that would be raising the cost of housing and, and making life a little more difficult for people to, to be affording to live in Santa Ana, it's, it's really, really difficult for me to support something that, that could be doing this to, to our population. So I would really, really ask and encourage and, yeah, request that you consider opposing this plan until we can ensure that, yeah, that the plan doesn't just account for people like me, but also the most vulnerable and the most, yeah, overlooked often. So thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us, and I hope that you'll consider what we're saying. Thank you.
Caller with the last four digits 8895, please identify yourself and state your name for the record, or state your position on the matter.
Bueno, buenas noches. Me llamo Angel Etías, y soy presidente de Madison. Y estoy aquí para exigir que retrasen el proceso para la actualización del plan general. De acuerdo con la ley general de California y las demandas de la comunidad, como hemos comentado una y otra vez sus esfuerzos por incluir las voces de la comunidad en la actualización del plan general, han sido insuficientes. Y ha sido muy apresurado, con muy pocas semanas, para poder leer y entender un plan de miles de páginas. ¿Cómo podemos hacer comentarios efectivos? Además, no han dejado tiempo para recibir nuestros comentarios para incorporarlos al plan. Si quieren tomar en serio la voz de la comunidad, por favor, no pasen este plan durante la pandemia. Gracias.
Cynthia, can you just briefly highlight what was stated in that comment?
Chairman, we actually have translation here. We can provide that service.
Okay.
I think she's talking about for the commission.
I'm talking about for the commission to understand, because not everybody on the commission could, was able to understand, so...
Yes, we have, we have a certified translator here tonight. If you just give us one moment, he will translate for not only the commission, but for members of the public and for the record. Just one moment, please.
That's fine, that's fine. Not a problem. Thank you, Cynthia.
No problem.
So I was just requesting that you delay the process according with California laws. This has been, has been fastened too much. We have so little weeks to review the entire plan so we can make efficient comments in regards to this report. We would like you to take into consideration our needs and our opinions. Please say no during this, this, do not approve this during this pandemic. Thank you for your time. Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, caller with the last four digits 7491, please identify yourself and state your position on the matter.
Hello, hi, this is for the planning commission members. My name is Adolfo Sierra, and on behalf of the Madison Park Neighborhood Association, I ask in the planning commissioners to please, and delay, and since I opposing the recommendations from the staff on items number 2A and 2B, and please delay approving this general plan updates. As it's been stated over and over from the other members of the community speaking up on environmental justice, it's going to be a good idea if also the recent elected incoming city officials are able to participate. I think they need, they need to participate on this process as well. The University of California, Irvine, the School of Law and Environmental Law Clinic, they've been sending you letters to the city council and city staff, and also you receive a letter from the Attorney General, from Javier Becerra, from the California Department of Justice. And they asking you to consider on the new general plan to include ways to mitigate the pollution related to toxic releases, groundwater threats, and hazardous waste. They also found that it wasn't included on the Cal Environment Screen, and also not on the Environmental Justice Background Report, that, that you significantly showed that the contamination from lead on, on the city soil on some of these different areas. Now, I believe that some of you, as commissioner members, that you probably live in some of the 21 neighborhoods affected by this pollution, and you might live in one of them or be representing one of them. So I asking you, please, delay it, vote no, for your, the people that you represent, your neighbors, your friends, your family, your kids, and yourself as well. You get in, maybe you live in one of these areas, you get, you, you probably have some kind of a health issue. As Doctor Kim from UCI sent you also a letter in November 5th, stating the problem that we have with the kids with asthma, a high concentration of kids visiting the ER because of asthma, and mostly from Santa Ana and from these areas. Also, when you receive the letter from the California Department of Justice...
Caller, your time is up.
...they also asking you to please, 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 listen to science, please, and listen to the rule, the rule of law and respect it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the last four digits 0793, please identify yourself and state your position on the matter.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Okay. Victor Russo is resident of Pacific Park. Just, I won't take too long, just want to echo what the callers are saying. It sounds like the community is calling in, and now they're speaking. I am not sure what residents were engaged in the past, but you hear everybody calling. So I just want to ask the same of everybody, that we do not approve this plan at this time and delay it until more engagement is done. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Caller with the last four digits 1739, please identify yourself and state your position on the matter.
Hi, my name is Kelly Ashay. Thank you so much for listening to public comments this evening. I'd like to say, just as all of the other callers, that I just think it's very important that you delay the adoption of the general plan at this time. There is no reason the plan needs to be approved and implemented right now. There are so many important reasons why the general plan should not be adopted now. First and foremost, I think it's critical, as everybody else has been saying, to have community input and have the residents' voices heard. It only makes sense to have the community that the plan is for to give their input. And under SB 1000, community injustices need to be looked at more closely in this plan, and that has not been sufficiently done. Secondly, you have a severe lead contamination issue that needs to be addressed for the health of the people living where the contamination is. This should be the city's top priority. OCEJ has a very comprehensive policy with recommendations that need to be taken into consideration in order to adequately combat injustices like this lead contamination. So please delay the adoption of this general plan this evening under these circumstances. It's not the right thing to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kelly.
Caller with the last four digits 3525, please identify yourself and state your position on the matter.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, great, good evening. My name is Cynthia, I'm a resident of Santana and a member of the National Public Commission. I'm calling first to have an permission to not recommend the adoption of the general plan and to postpone its adoption until policies that truly meet the community's needs are proposed, and the city is able to conduct better community engagement. One of the concerns raised by the committee has been the need for policies that truly address the lack of open space in the city. While the city provided a few policy changes this past Friday, there are a lot of questions around how the policies will be implemented, who they will apply to, and particularly in our case, how they will impact communities. Residents should be given more time to review the policies and engage with the city to ensure they are effective and they actually don't hurt the community. The city has completely failed, additionally, the city has completely failed to address concerns over the lack of housing affordability requirements and anti-displacement policies in the general focus areas for the city's incentive vice and development. The city responded to a rise of public comment on the EIR by saying that 581 acres of non-residential land would be converted to residential uses. And I know folks have said here on the presentation that it's theoretical, but that's a lot of acres. None of this is required to be affordable. Given the city weekends the housing opportunity ordinance, it is likely the vast majority will be market rate housing that our community cannot afford. I mean, I would just like the city to please let me know how many market rate housing developers have voluntarily, with no incentive from the city, voluntarily created affordable housing in their development? How many units have actually been producing affordable housing for very long with their families? So I think that's a huge issue that has constantly been brought up and has not been addressed at all by the city, despite all the community engagement they've safely done. Another concern is that the city has not properly assessed environmental justice issues in the city. All of the community outreach and meetings that they did for environmental justice were done during COVID-19, the COVID-19 pandemic. As folks have stated, they started in May. Not only is this not enough time, but the pandemic creates serious accessibility issues for folks who don't have access to computers, who have language, who face language barriers, or who are simply preoccupied with the effects of COVID. It's particularly true of residents in disadvantaged communities. 32,000 flyers mailed is not in any way meaningful community engagement, especially when residents were receiving a lot of mail during the election. And I wonder how effective it was to engage folks at the different testing sites and the care groups while they were trying to get tested for COVID or, or get resources. I think finally, three out of seven current members of council will be leaving, including the mayor. They should be make, they should not be the ones making the decisions for a plan for the next 20 years. That should be left to the new council. Everyone, everyone I have heard at all the meetings I have attended, there's been plenty, but not enough, everyone has said the plan should be postponed in order to be able to conduct better community outreach, and not only outreach...
Caller, time is up.
...but incorporation of community input. So I don't understand who exactly are you listening to when you want to continue?
Thank you. Your, your three minutes are up, please.
Okay, but who exactly are you listening to when you want to continue this plan? Because everyone else has asked you to postpone. So no general plan, no community. I think you should postpone this plan.
Thank you. Appreciate your input.
Caller with the last four digits 4990, please identify yourself and state your position on the matter.
Hello, my name is Perla Mendoza, and I am a resident of Santana. And I'm here to demand that you delay the general plan update in accordance with California law and with the demands of the Santana community. During the limited unsuccessful outreach the city has conducted, the city has not sufficiently accommodated the needs of EJ communities. There have been multiple issues conducting community outreach events online, including the lack of translation services, technological difficulties, and a lack of necessary telecommunications services within EJ communities. While we appreciate the effort the city has made to address these issues in recent meetings, this does not change the fact that so many community members' voices have been excluded from the process. How can we move forward with the plan without including our voices? Every single meeting everyone has attended to has asked for the delay in the plan, and I hope you take this into consideration. We are using our voices, but we aren't being heard. I ask for the delay of the general plan.
Thank you.
Caller with the 619 area code and last four digits 0073, please identify yourself and state your position on the matter.
Hi, my name is Victor Payan, and I am a resident of the Pacific Park Eastside Neighborhood. My position is, is no, it's to delay the plan. Every, I attended several of the online community meetings, and the number one concern of the residents was that there was not very much time and that the outreach was not sufficient. There were many great ideas that were presented for inclusion, and I, I don't know if there's been time to include them, but, but I, I second what everybody else is saying. It was the most important thing that was on the minds of the residents to delay the plan, especially during a pandemic. So the ideas that I suggest are to change the, the areas into live, work, and flex around 21st and Grant to Chestnut. There's already an arts colony there, the Ad Arts Building, and, uh, First and Grant, sorry. And making the surrounding area live, work would really help that area blossom around Fairview and Harvard by the Heritage Museum, since there is a homeless shelter going up around there. Having artists on site would be a great buffer between that shelter, the Buddhist temple, and surrounding businesses. And also recommend zoning changes on South Harbor around the Observatory, which is our biggest music venue. We need a SoCo-style development there with food and retail, because, you know, that area attracts a lot of people, but there's no infrastructure for them after they go to the venue, so they all go into Costa Mesa to spend their money, and we're losing the food and retail money, the Costa Mesa. So to really look at these, these areas where there is cultural and artistic activity and fill in some other services and, and kinds of businesses that will help, you know, build those roots and attract people and keep them there, especially Santa Ana residents, you know, so they can stay and, you know, live and be entertained at their own communities. So those are some suggestions that I have. So those are some suggestions that I have. Also, to look at areas that can be developed as arts districts. But going back to what I was saying before, I think in South Main especially. But going back to before what I was saying, I think the number one concern from the residents is that this plan not be rushed and be sloppy, but be, you know, given the time that it needs to do it and to be done right with the best ideas. And the only way that can be done is to delay it and not rush it through. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor.
Caller with the last four digits 3947, please state your name and your position on the matter. Caller with the last four digits 3947, please dial *6 to unmute yourself.
Hello, this is Janelle Hardy, a 30-plus resident of the South Main Street neighborhood, Henniger Park. I'd like to see a delay until next year to adopt the general plan. I have some issues. I mean, it's wonderful that we've thought to include surveys, but we need more than that. We need to bring the adaptive reuse overlay down to South Main because just doing a survey doesn't encourage not doing demolition for property. And we need to have tools to preserve the existing structures because we already have residential, commercial, and mixed use on South Main and that are affordable. And I think giving tools to preserve those structures and rehab them will help prevent gentrification, and I think that's an environmental justice issue because just building a new three-story, some kind of higher density building is not going to make South Main better necessarily. So I would really like to see adaptive reuse overlay brought down to South Main. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle.
Caller with the last four digits 5196, please identify yourself and state your position on the matter.
Hi, good evening. My name is Yelena Riola and I live in one of the disadvantaged communities, specifically in the South Main area in the community of Delhi, which has been identified by the UCI research study to be probably the most impacted by the toxic lead matter. I don't want to, like, be too frank, but, you know, I keep hearing the argument from the city planning, or, I'm sorry, the people who interacted with the general plan, saying that the timeframe, you know, matters. But I think that it's really important to just, like, detach yourself from that and, like, understand that we're coming from a place of urgency. These are our livelihoods, these are our families, these are our friends, these are children. You know, and things like the toxic lead matter affect people's education, affect people's chances at life, et cetera. And I think it's very, you know, it's one thing to take the general plan update, which has been on the website for a long time. And then when environmental justice concerns from the California Department of Justice, you know, makes an issue that you incorporate what policies you had and you identify them as potentially being environmental justice policies. But I don't see why it's not, environmental justice is not reason enough to create a whole element of environmental justice and then incorporate the other elements under that umbrella. Because I think that is where we're at this point. Again, we're coming from urgency, you know, there was a lot of outreach, but it wasn't enough. We are among the largest cities in Orange County, and all we're asking for is a delay. We're not asking for a whole complete write-up. We want environmental justice policies implemented, and it's super important. And you know what, like, I live in Santana. I am one of the most vulnerable members of the community. You know, my family's low income, my family, you know, we have elderly people in my family. And then, you know, the Chili's in my grandma's backyard could be the ones that infected the blood. Like, it's genuinely concerning with our livelihoods. And I hope that you are able to see how the adoption of this plan would exacerbate the environmental justice concerns that we all have. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chair, that was the last caller for this item.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Secretary. So at this point in time, we will close.
Chair, I'm sorry, we have two more callers who raised their hand to speak, so we're going to give them the opportunity.
Go ahead.
Caller with the last four digits 8228, please state your name and your position on the matter.
Yes, hello. Um, so yeah, my name is Keila Viejas. I am the community organizer for Orange County Environmental Justice. I'm also a resident of Santana. I'm here to ask you again to consider to delay the adoption of the general plan update and incorporate meaningful community recommendations and demands. Santana is not only being disproportionately impacted by COVID-19, but it's also facing a soil-led contamination crisis in disadvantaged communities. Santana residents and children themselves are being poisoned. People are being told to be quarantined in place, but how could they be safe when their own soil, their own neighborhood, their own city is the hot spot of soil-led contamination at exponential levels? Now is the chance to work together and not divide each other. This country has seen enough division of the lifetime. Your residents are pressuring you. Neighborhood, neighboring cities are looking at you. The state is looking at you. This is the time to correct ourselves, better ourselves, and work together. I urge you to incorporate OCEJ's strategy framework to combat this lead contamination crisis, along with so many other recommendations from community members and community orgs that have been present tonight and in previous meetings, telling you the same thing over and over again. There is no legal requirement for the city to adopt the general plan strictly by this November or even by 2020. I know that there have been city council members who have made it a rule to pass it by now, but we are now living in a completely different circumstance. We're all adapting to this change, you know, adapting to different ways of socializing, mobilizing, and communicating. These are very difficult times for all of us. I urge you to do the same by postponing the adoption and allowing ample time for engagement. Postponing the adoption will give the planning commission adequate time to not only notify residents with a piece of paper or an Instagram post, but to listen to them, engage with them, and incorporate their voices in the legislative process as expected by SB 1000. Overall, please postpone this adoption of the Santana general plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, Carla with a heart emoji, please state your position on the matter.
Hi, I'm also on the phone. I can do it online, that's fine. So my name is Carla Juarez. I am a resident, longtime resident of Santana. I live in Henniger Park. I am one of the communities that is disadvantaged as part of the environmental justice communities. Mentioned, I just want to make clarification that it states that 17 census tracts in Santana that are considered environmental justice communities, but that is 20 communities. So those 17 census tracts is actually 20 communities that are affected. I am in opposition of approving the general plan. I believe that this is not the time that it should be pushed, that we should allow enough time for people to voice their concerns. There's only 760 people that you said that made a comment, and I've been to maybe four of those meetings. So I wonder if I was counted as four? And I know others also on here today were also on those meetings as well, and I'm wondering if they're also counted twice. Nonetheless, that it's only 760. The population of Santana is 330,000 plus. So that's not even 1% of the population of Santana. 1% would be 3,300 residents. But we don't even have, not even 1,000 residents commenting on this important plan that will take effect and will affect generations to come. So if we waited 30 years for the general plan, to revise the general plan, we could wait a couple months. Right now during COVID, when people are worried about how are they going to pay their rent, they're worried about loved ones, they're worried about going out, making a living, they're really not focusing on the general plan. And also, I think we have to check our privilege. I was lucky enough and I'm blessed enough to be able to go to these meetings. I'm blessed enough to know English. I am blessed enough to have a car and be able to attend whatever I need to attend in order to understand what's going on in Santana. But there's many out there that are not. I also want to share my story. Myself and my siblings, we have asthma. And also, I was making the connections and connecting the dots. My sister was also a preemie. And that is, I mean, it's quite a coincidence. And if you ask in the police department or a police or investigator, there's no such thing as coincidence. I didn't learn about the environmental justice until July 2020. And I am also, I'm very, or I believe, like to believe that I am a community activist and I am very active, but I was not aware about the environmental justice.
Calling, your time is up.
So I urge you to please don't pass.
Thank you, caller. Any other callers at this point in time, Madam Secretary?
We'll do, yes, we do have a few callers. And a reminder, if you'd like to speak on this matter, you must dial *9 to indicate your desire to speak. So we'll take the last few callers that we have.
Okay.
Caller, Keila with OCEJ, please state your position on the matter.
Oh, I already went on the phone.
Thank you.
You already spoke, is that what you just said, Keila?
Yeah, I was caller 8228.
Okay, thank you for telling us that.
All right, next caller with the last four digits 2232, please state your name and your position on the matter.
Hello, my name is Keila Also, and I'm also a member of OCE, Environmental Justice. I have been a member of this organization for over a year now, and I have not once seen a city council member come to any of our meetings, talk to any of the membership, or ask for community input. If anything, it has been, memberships have gone to the city council to try and voice some of their concerns, to voice some of their concerns right now, to ask to delay the vote until next year or vote no. During this presentation, officials have dismissed environmental justice measures as saying this happened. This is the relationship that the city council wants to have with one of the organizations that they've been consulting with? I wonder how they are proud of their, of this community engagement? As so many people have said, not even 1% of the Santana residents have been consulted about this plan. Hardly anyone has even been consulted about the environmental justice concerns. Many of the organizations that the city council has mentioned are speaking out seriously against this plan, demanding a delayed vote or refusal. So I know where I stand on the measure. I agree with everybody who has spoken before. And yeah, just vote no. Don't confirm this plan during the length of session during a pandemic where people are suffering, especially here in Santana, especially with environmental justice concerns. And try to do something for the Santana residents and not just try to push forth these justification measures that have environmental justice implications. Yeah, just vote no or postpone the vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that it, Sarah?
No, Chair, we have a couple more.
Caller with the
All right, let's get them.
Caller with the last four digits 6340, please state your name and your position on the matter.
Hello, good evening. My name is Dermah Haraghi. I'm a resident of Volta Square, co-founder of the Santana Healthy Neighborhood Alliance and past president of Volta Square. I also want to agree with all the speakers before me that have concerns about the health and the environmental justice and the pollution and contamination, that is item one. Item two, I would also agree with Janelle Hardy from Henniger about having a deeper, in-depth look at the South Main corridor that is historic in nature, not changing the character and really seeing the ability to repurpose, reuse, and reinvent South Main without destroying it. And also for the part of the South Main where Delhi is and of the business and residential owners of the area by Maynard Warner, the homeless situation of both the Armory, the Mental Health Agency, and having that area being better supported and dealing with those issues. In doing so, we would have a stronger presence. The present residents, communities, businesses, schools would be healthier before building for the future. If you build on weakness, you cannot expect a brilliant future. We have to really pause and look. And I also agree with all my neighbors to just stop and wait till the pandemic's over and we have more input from the community and more thought about the process going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam.
Caller with the last four digits 0713, please state your name and your position on the matter.
Hi, this is Leonel Flores, calling again. I just wanted to mention there's some people that are trying to connect still.
I'm sorry, we already had you provide a comment, Mr. Flores.
You already spoke?
Yes, we have.
Yeah, so, okay, let me make my comment then, and then I'll get off.
If you've already spoke, if you've already spoke, then we have to move on.
We've got other people that want to talk. So you've already spoke, please allow people that haven't spoke.
Let me just say this, then, on the previous item, you allowed the person applying for the permit to speak for two hours.
We'll go ahead and meet the caller, Chair.
Okay, next.
We have one last caller on our list here.
Caller with the last four digits 4072, please state your name and your position on the matter.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Dr. Alfonso Alvarez. I'm a resident of Madison Park area. I'm also a school board member, but I'm here talking as a private resident. I believe that you guys should not approve the general plan. It does not fully address the environmental justice issues which are at hand. We have high lead levels within our city. I live down the street from a contaminated land area, and that hasn't been fully addressed. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that the city of Santana has not cooperated or collaborated with the Southern Unified School District to identify these toxic lands, these contaminated lands, and work together to see how we can address those issues. I wanted to ask you not to approve this plan today. Table it, let's work on it more, and let's develop a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Alfonso. All right, that's it, Sarah?
Yes, Chair, that concludes the callers for this item.
Okay, so having said that, Okay, so having said that, at this point in time, we'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the commission. And we'll start with Commissioner Garcia. Have you got any questions that you'd like to ask or statements you'd like to make or follow up with staff on anything at this point in time?
Uh, yes, thank you. I have a, I think a couple, a couple of questions based on public comment. The first is, uh, what is staff's perspective on, uh, whether or not the general plan, uh, the proposed general plan addresses, uh, the lead contamination issue from an environmental justice standpoint?
Okay. Vince Min?
Min, would you like me to jump in? This is Melanie.
Mr. Chairman, Melanie McCann's been working with, uh, the EJ communities on this particular issue, so maybe Melanie's best, uh, one to speak on it.
That's fine. Uh, we're not, we're not picking the chews and we just want to get the, uh, correct information.
Great. Uh, thanks for the question and, and it gives an opportunity to, to fill in some of the blanks for everyone. So, um, we have been working with the Orange County Healthcare Agency. And as mentioned earlier, um, the Orange County, um, environmental justice groups with UCI, um, and a few others. So, um, and I, and I just would say that as a staff person, we're very thankful that our community is so active and engaged. And we're, uh, looking forward to bridging the conversations so we really truly can all work together to move forward on action. And, um, so with that, I would, I would say that between our conversations with our, uh, lead, uh, uh, contamination, we call them round tables, we've met just a couple, just a couple times, um, and also with our conversations with the Attorney General, they both have given us some feedback onto strengthen some of our measures related to lead. And actually, in our most recent conversation with the Attorney General, they were very complimentary on, um, the measures we were able to add based on, uh, feedback from the, the, the groups we've spoken with. And, um, so that's where, um, there are a number of measures that, um, talk about, and I'll, I'll touch on the, the public health plan, which has been very, um, important for, for some of the organizations. And the way that we have framed it, it's one of the implementation actions. And it says to partner with Orange County Healthcare Agency and other community-serving organizations, um, to evaluate the best practices and benefits for preparing a public health plan to address environmental health hazards in Santa Ana with a special focus on environmental justice. And in talking with the Attorney General, we shared with them that our perspective was we are not, um, trying to put anything off, but we want to do a little bit of studying, confirm what the benefits are, confirm what the costs are, confirm how the resources can be pulled together, how we can coordinate with healthcare agency and, and those that are, you know, in the professional business of this. And so that's how our approach was, um, one of the approaches for the lead. And then there's also some measures that were suggested by the healthcare agency on some of the programs they're already working with to, um, provide, um, free, uh, blood tests. But the funding and the resources to have free blood tests, um, you know, citywide was not something that was seen was feasible. But, um, there are ways that we can work together to, um, have, um, uh, to encourage people to get their own blood test if they can through their medical, their medical providers. And if they don't, there was been conversation how to collaborate with the Orange County Healthcare Agency to promote that. So without getting into any more of the, the details, there are a number of actions that really move us forward to action, to working together for action. You know, even another one where we would work with, um, making sure that when there's the additions to houses, that we explore an ordinance that might require training so people that are working on those houses know to, to understand that anything that's been built prior to nineteen seventy-eight might have lead in the paint and so they need to be trained. And so there's a number of measures which, as I mentioned, the, the Attorney General, which we spoke to most recently, their representatives were, um, uh, were complimentary about the additions that we made. And, um, I think what's in our general plan now is not, um, is not all of what was demanded, if you will, um, by the, um, the community. But it's a lot of really good steps forward and we feel confident that, that these meet the intentions, um, and the, of SB one thousand. Hopefully that helps.
Thank you, Melanie.
It, yeah, I have a, a follow-up just because we did have, and I, I tried to count the number of callers that came in and I probably, uh, miscounted, but we had about, yeah, about thirty callers.
Thirty, thirty-one.
Okay. And I think everybody overwhelmingly said delay, you know, not now, but you ended your answer, Melanie, with, um, you didn't incorporate everything that was requested by the community to address the lead issue. And so, you know, sort of begs the follow-up question, what didn't we include and why?
So for example, one of them was to have, uh, free blood testing for all residents in the environmental justice areas. So that's something that we didn't think was feasible. There's no, you know, that needs to be, um, it, but number one, there's the healthcare agency that's the, kind of the expert in that field. So to, that seemed like, uh, a, 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 a nice goal, but not, not feasible for us at this
Was that it?
Uh, there are other measures as well. I'm looking at one of the letters now. Some have to do with air quality as well, um, besides lead. The, and the other key one was that, um, there was a strong, um, request to do the health, um, the, um, the public health plans now. So the public, public health plan, they would outline how lead would be addressed. So again, as I mentioned before, we're ve- very much open to those kinds of solutions, but our recommendation was to look at best practices, talk to the healthcare agency, the Department of Toxic, um, at the state level and, uh, kind of know what we're getting into and then work together with all, uh, everyone to pull together. Another, um, another action that's in here is to, um, to create a baseline of, um, the lead contamination, the extent of it, and work together as a group to do that, again with UCI, but also with some of the other regional organizations to, um, affirm the data and, um, and all agree on the same baseline information.
And, um, my, my next question, um, relates to the Attorney General letter that was issued, uh, to the city and then the response. I didn't get, um, the response from the city that was dated October thirtieth until this afternoon, so I didn't really get a chance to go through it as I would have liked. Um, and so I don't know, may, maybe I'll table that question in case, um, Yankee Flu weren't at a time, but I think that's, that remains, um, something I would like to discuss. But we can, we can hold on that mark, uh, if I'm sure there are other questions.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Are you, so you're set for now?
I am, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Morrissey.
Yes, thank you. I'm unmuted now. Okay. I, uh, do have a few more questions. In response to some of the things I heard, um, it seems like it'd be clearer to have a separate document with environmental justice items, uh, containing all the environmental justice items. I'm searching through the document, trying to find where some of these issues are. So as I understand it, there's significant lead poisoning, have we identified those areas? And are they located on any maps or identified in any way?
I guess I would offer, um, Commissioner, that if, if we would like to, um, get a stronger foundation on, on, um, number one, how the environmental justice areas are, are identified, it's through a number of indicators. And there's a, on the website, there's a whole section that's on environmental justice. And within there, there's a more depth study that shows, answers your question on where are the areas that show higher, um, areas of lead, which could be next, hither next to freeways and roads or could be, um, because of industrial. So there's lots of resources on the website and if we needed to get into that, um, that depth, um, we could certainly do so.
Well, my, my other concern in, in that regard is, uh, the EIR had identified five hundred and fifty-five sites with significant environmental issues, but, uh, no mitigation was required. So I'm hearing two different things in terms of, um, the hazards that are, that are present and, um, people recognizing that and, um, asking for help in that regard. However, our EIR is not requiring any mitigation.
This is Joanne. Can I make one comment about that?
Please do.
Yeah, um, I, I think that is very confusing to people. The EIR has to address potential impact of the proposed project, the general plan update in comparison to existing conditions. Um, so it is, it is not the sequel realm to remediate, remedy those existing hazard, hazardous conditions. So the EIR lists the policies and everything, but it, the EIR under sequels very specifically has to address the impact of the project, um, in comparison to existing conditions, but not to fix existing conditions. So that, that goes across the board. So the in, uh, the inadequate park and open space right now, it's the same situation. It's inadequate, uh, but our analysis starts with what does the project, growth of the district plan update generate? And that's what it has to mitigate.
Okay.
Okay, so we've identified five hundred and fifty-five sites with environmental issues that are significant. What are, what is our recommendation?
Well, I.
Joanne, how would you?
That in the general plan?
Those, those sites are under, uh, regular, regulatory control. And a lot of those have already been cleaned up. So that, so it's, you know, I think our tables list everything, but the, but it shows where they are in the process and what the issue was, you know, whether, uh, it's an underground tank, et cetera. Uh, but it's, you know, primarily regulatory. It doesn't come under the city's jurisdiction. It's DTSC, Department of Toxic Substances Control.
But it affects the people who live in the city.
So, so Commissioner, um, Morrissey, so that's part of, um, what the opportunity has been here as we've, as we've all gotten more engaged in environmental justice, is it's an opportunity for the city to do what we can do to facilitate the regional, um, entities like Department of Toxic, Toxic Substances, that, that that is their job to regulate these things, air quality management district. It is their job and their expertise to, um, to oversee some of their quality permits. So it's our opportunity now that we're all more aware to see where the city can facilitate. But as Joanne is mentioning, those sites are monitored, tracked, and are the responsibility of other government agencies. So that's where we're looking for opportunities which we've identified in some of these implementation actions where we can start to make some positive change. And actually, we've, we've been in contact with Department of Toxic Substances to have them, um, assist where they can, see what grant funding they can provide to help do some studies. So, so it's about building those relationships and partnering with those government agencies that are really tasked with those, um, hazardous topics. Does that help a little bit?
Chairman, Chairman, this is Mintai. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes, so I, I'm sorry, but I've been having some technical difficulties and I wanted to join in on the conversation regarding the lead issue. Um, as our staff mentioned, we did follow up with the A G as to their letter as well, speaking to the A G about some of the many policies and implementation action that we provided. Um, and, uh, it was very, a very positive conversation, particularly relating to lead. Um, there's been policy that we have added that addresses, um, how we can be a partner, uh, to addressing lead issues in our city. As you know, we are a regulatory agency on land use, uh, time, place and manner concerns. Uh, as it relates to health concerns, many of which are outside of our agency's control as mentioned by Ms. Hadfield. Um, but how we can be a part of this productive process to improve the community's condition is through policies such as, um, three point one nine, which talks about, uh, you know, working with the O C Healthcare Agency, Latino Health Access, Sanified Unified School District, and Coalition for Community Health Centers to increase blood testing outreach, education, referral services, um, and looking at, you know, how we can help our residents focusing in on some of the environmental justice area, uh, providing safe housing, talking of policy three point two zero, uh, requiring residential project to use local, not federal fund, um, local, that's local, not just HUD and federal fund, to comply with less safe housing rules. What that means is that we will clean up housing, um, uh, units that have lead contamination when we provide and participate in funding, not only the federal, but the local level as well. Um, public health outcome, uh, support the Orange County, and this is, uh, implementation action three point two two. Support Orange County Healthcare Agency in their role in increasing public complaints regarding lead hazard through enforcement of local housing standards and ensure healthy outcomes. And, you know, these types of policies, um, are, are all incorporated throughout the eleven elements. In terms of EJ goals and policy, we have sixty-one policies and sixty-one implementation actions, I'm sorry, sixty-nine policies and sixty-one implementation actions that have been woven throughout the eleven elements so that they are, um, uh, provided the, the highlight that they have in terms of how we can address these issues. Um, so we chose early on not to have the environmental justice issue, um, be in one element because of its high level of importance and that there needs to be an elevated awareness of EJ issues. And that's why we chose to incorporate it throughout the policy so that they're addressed in every single policies, in land use, circulation, open space, um, the community elements, uh, anything that you have a policy that says in EJ, that's, uh, environmental justice issue. Anything that, you know, you, you have in EJ and in policy, that's also an environmental justice implementation action. Um, the A G in their letter to us, uh, indicates the primary goal of SB one thousand is to look at how to address, uh, pollution in a community relating to, uh, exposure, uh, from air quality pollution, um, you know, looking at promoting food access, uh, promoting a safe and sanitary homes and communities, promoting physical activities, um, and also access for the public to facilities that help active living, improving health and wellness. And, you know, also through the process of community engagement. You mentioned previously, we have extensive community engagement throughout this entire process. Um, you know, if you look at the policies and the actions that we have created, uh, from land use to open space to the community, we talk to looking for promoting reduction of pollution. use to open space, to the community, may talk to looking for promoting reduction of pollution in the air, pollution in lead, pollution in water contamination, through working with AQMD, working with DTSC, regulatory agencies that will control over these issues, and the regulatory agency has been charged to have the oversight on these issues. How we as a city can be a good policy is that we act as an agency that provides information and also be an advocate for our community on addressing these issues that are outside of our regulatory control. Where we do have ability to do so, we look at land use control, to look at mitigating businesses that are here today, and look at how we can either increase buffer, you know, or working to potentially even relocation at some point, amortization out of land uses, things that we can do as we move forward under our land use control. So, there are many of these examples of these that are woven throughout the entire general plan. And, you know, I think it's very well represented in terms of how we address the issue. Again, the AG, when we had a follow-up conversation call with them in response to their October 16th letter, they were very complimentary on, they understood better mechanism we had for the outreach. They understand the uniqueness of our neighborhood initiative program and that, how that has enabled us to better outreach to our community, all 64 neighborhoods, not just the 21 EJ community, but all 64 neighborhoods throughout our city, throughout this entire process. So, again, we believe that we have met and even exceeded SB 1000 standard, both in terms of outreach, as well as achieving the goals of the pollution's reduction, improving access to healthy food, and safe and sanitary housing conditions. Thank you.
Okay, Tom, any other questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I noticed on the EIR, and maybe I'm misreading it again, states that there's a significant increase in greenhouse gas emissions anticipated, which is unavoidable. So, is that what we're saying, that greenhouse gas emissions will increase and will be harmful and they are unavoidable?
This is Joanne again. That's true. Our company placework does a lot of general plans and general plan EIR, and greenhouse gas is essentially always a significant unavoidable impact due to the scale of the project. But it's also pretty much been determined that, the reason that even if greenhouse gas and technology is reduced, and is reduced on a per capita basis, we still can't achieve the 2005 executive order, which requires greenhouse gases to be reduced 80% compared to 1990 levels. So, no other jurisdiction, at least that we've worked with, has been able to achieve that on a general plan level. So, all the feasible mitigation that we can possibly throw out at it, it still can't meet that 2050 target.
So, as a follow-up to that, what are we doing in our general plan to attempt to get there? We, you know, talked earlier in the meeting about adding rooftop greenery, that's one strategy. What other, I mean, we actually haven't, I don't know that we're implementing strategies like that in the general plan. I think we should. What other, are there any other initiatives we've undertaken to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions?
Well, I will let Colin and Melanie speak to it, but from an environmental standpoint, most everything that's an air quality measure, also we do greenhouse gases and CO2. So, you'll see when you look at the mitigation measures, for example, the executive summary table, or the mitigation monitoring reporting plan that lists all the mitigation measures, most all the air quality measures, both for construction and for mobile emissions do it, then there's a lot of stationary source measures as well. We include all the, excuse me, all the recommended carbs, air resources board measures. So, all that is on top of looking first at what the general, general plan policies will achieve. And of course, a big one is the VMP, transportation going to a vehicle miles traveled metric instead of level service, to reduce mobile emissions. Auto emissions are the primary source, greenhouse gases.
Colin, did you want to touch on any of the actions, or did you want me to, related to reducing greenhouse gas, improving air quality?
Why don't you go ahead and take a stab at it and I'll pick out anything.
Fill in the gap. Okay. So, I'm looking at the conservation element, and so, there's, there's one example that says evaluate the feasibility of adopting Cal Green Building Code, non-residential measures. There's one that talks about natural carbon sequestration, reduce the amount of carbon dioxide that would otherwise be released into the atmosphere through the continued maintenance and expansion of the city's urban forest, and development of other green infrastructure, and explore options to include green infrastructure in the new public realm. Then there's another one about retrofitting existing buildings. It's 3.4. Support and encourage retrofitting existing buildings to achieve energy optimization. Partner with Southern California Edison and other stakeholders to provide incentives, rebates, and expedited permit processing. So, that would be an effort that Public Works and Planning would work on together. Fund energy projects. I could go on, but a good patch of them are on page CN 19 in the conservation element. I'm looking at the implementation actions.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And then the city, the city also updates its budget action plan every five years, too. That's also a mitigation measure.
Another tool, yeah. That helps a little bit, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you very much. That does help.
You're welcome.
That's a lot. I don't know if I got an answer on what the assumption was, or what qualifies as a dry year, and how many of those we anticipate, and what does a shortage mean? How, what would that?
I went, I went back to Fusco's report and also the summary in the EIR. If you look at Table 518, Utility Section 518 dash 16, it quantifies that there's no water shortage for either a normal year or three dry years, and that's the requirement. And then the appendix with the detail from Fusco is Appendix HB. They make that same conclusion, that there's, that there's no deficit for buildout of the general plan.
Okay. Well, there's, I took the information from Table 518.10, so I guess there was a...
That might have been existing conditions. The impact analysis is 518 dash 16.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
Sure.
So, the other thing I want to clarify is that the open space element will include an additional 299 acres of parkland. Currently, that was our projected deficit.
Vincent Min, would you like to take this one?
The open space element set a goal of achieving a standard of two acre per thousand residents, and that goal is inclusive of looking at how we can increase the existing level of open space for our residents, as well as for future development that creates additional demand for open space. You're correct in terms of the projected, of what's in the general plan, open space element. We have a significant amount of, to get to two acres per thousand. And we have established policies that will help us to be able to achieve as we move forward in terms of how we can go about achieving two acre per thousand, through requiring new development, either through the payment or fees, and contribution into the fund for the acquisition of new park space, as well as requiring the production of park space on certain types of what we call large projects. When they do occur, are required to evaluate and implement how to create open space as part of the development of the project itself. So, that's one strategy. Another strategy is to look at how do we work with our 60 agencies throughout our cities, such as the school districts, such as, you know, other public agency, college districts, that are also public landowner, that serves the same population as we do, on evaluating how we can have share use of space to help create additional parklands and open space for our residents. So, the element itself sets high expectation in terms of goals and policy, and through the implementation specifically as part of the Park Master Plan, that will be an opportunity for us to start basically looking at how we can start to reduce some of the deficit that we currently have, and coupling that with ensuring that when we do develop new projects in the future, that they produce what's required. We, you know, the goal is to basically help create additional open space and eventually meet the goal of two acre per thousand visitors.
Tom, any more?
I guess, yeah, the, I guess I'm just very concerned that, you know, we're increasing the population and we're making, we're committing to this master plan, but we don't know for sure if we can reach the two acres per. We're essentially adding an additional 40 acre, 35, 40 acres to that requirement, but we don't know if we can get there.
Right.
All right. The other topic is, so I heard from the telephone callers that I heard several times that we'd only engaged three of 18 neighborhoods. What was the community outreach program to the neighborhood associations? How many of the associations did we conduct out to fight or mal justice?
Outreach on the general plan and the issues of the general plan was conducted citywide. We went to every ward. We went to every focus area, and we also worked through our neighborhood initiative program to engage with their networking of the 64 neighborhoods, to engage residents about the general plan, about issues of the general plan, and, you know, issues that they have in the neighborhoods that need to be addressed through the general plan. And that's how the development of the many policies, I'm sorry, that's how the development of the five core principles took place. And based on those core principles, as you saw, they all address one aspect of another environmental justice concerns, it relates to health, economic, open space, equity, education, and that's what we use to help formulate our policies and implementation actions. So, when you ask, have we reached out to all the community? We have reached out citywide, throughout the 64 neighborhoods in our city.
Okay, thank you. So, the last thing I would like to ask about is, I noticed on the transportation element, we used to have a connection between Floral Park and Santiago Creek, identified in the general plan, but it looks like that's no longer in the plan. I think it's important that we connect our communities, especially in that case, there's, it's quite a, a lot of people like to walk Santiago Creek and can't do that currently from our neighborhood. They have to go across the bridge or across Main Street to do that. And it's there, so I think that's, that's an important connection. Also, there are bike paths identified on the Santa Ana Industrial Line, South Spur, on the rail line diagrams. Is that something we're planning on exploring?
This is Ed with the City's Traffic. Yes, that is something we're proposing to explore.
Okay. So, on the connection to Jack Fisher Park, is that something we can add into the general plan?
So, Commissioner Morris, you're referring to the bike, bike trail that connects the existing, I guess, north side of the freeway to the south side of the freeway. That area, as you may be familiar with, have no connection in terms of the river, while it was an aspiration for us to look at that possible connection, but many of the properties there, even though it may look, it's publicly accessible, is private property and the city does not have access to, enough access to create a continuous bike path at that location. So, it's something that we looked at and evaluated and feel that, you know, it being infeasible, we took it out of, as a proposal, and, you know, it's something that certainly can be looked at in future, but under today's conditions, that path is not feasible.
I think that's what I'm asking, is the general plan used to show it just passing under the bridge, and that kept the conversation open, but once we take that away, then looking at it again in the future is much more difficult. So, I don't think it actually showed it going to Jack Fisher Park. I think that was open for discussion for the reasons you mentioned.
That path is never shown any direction to Jack Fisher Park.
Correct, but it was shown going under the bridge.
Right.
Under the Flower, under the Flower Street Bridge?
No.
Under the five?
The freeway.
Yeah, but that's all Caltrans, that's not, that's not the city.
Correct. As I mentioned, we don't own the right of way in that area to be able to create the connection necessary to make that bike path happen.
Right. Exactly.
Okay.
Tom, anything else that you've got? Good questions?
No, those were the last of my questions.
Okay. Commissioner Nguyen?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Fan?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to make a motion to continue this item. You know, we've been sitting here, I've read all the letters and comments that were submitted. You know, we've been sitting here, I've read all the letters and comments that were submitted virtually, and obviously, the vast majority of, you know, residents commenting the letters and tonight were to ask us to continue the item. Staff will know, I have been looking for a general update for years now. And it was probably one of the first things I told Min when he came on board, you know, when is this general plan update coming to us? So for me, it was, it's definitely something really important, you know, because we need a road and we need this plan, but at the same time, you know, I grew up in an environmental justice area. I grew up in an area where a lot of, you know, my neighbors, including myself, grew up with asthma and other folks in my family. So it is something very important to me and I recognize that it is a major issue for our residents. I think staff has done a great job trying their best to do reach during very difficult times. And I understand it's hard to do outreach, you know, with COVID and we can't meet face to face, but they have done some of that and they're trying their best. And, you know, COVID isn't going away. We'll have to find other, you know, ways to continue to contact residents. We still can't hold big meetings, but I do have faith that staff will continue to be creative and take into account, you know, some of these, to do outreach, to continue to do outreach, because I do know that staff has been holding various meetings with different community groups. I really appreciated, I'm sorry, I don't remember the consultant's name or the city consultant's name, you know, mentioning that in E R, in every mediation a forward look document based on, I mean, we have a baseline. But I do think that it's something for the city to consider in the long term to, you know, to look to these contamination areas and whatnot. But given that we have a big change coming and given that the community is, you know, speaking in unison and asking for some more time, I would like to make a motion to continue this to date uncertain where Min and his team, you know, can do more outreach and then decide when to bring it back to the commission and take into account all these comments and notes for the residents. So that's my very long motion.
Your motion is to continue? Go ahead Felix.
This is Commissioner Rivera, I second.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion and a second at this point in time. Is there any discussion, any further discussion that anybody wants to have at this point in time? Vice Chair Contreras Leo? Cynthia?
Yes, I'm here.
Cynthia, okay.
I'm here.
Okay.
So first of all, I'd like to, you know, thank and acknowledge staff. They've been working on this diligently for five years. You know, we can't forget, five years is a long time, a lot of resources. And they've been outreach-ing and to their credit, it has gone out in three languages. And, you know, it's unfortunate that COVID hit. Nobody saw that coming and we don't have an end yet for it. So unfortunately, city business still have to continue. We need to continue and move forward. The good thing is, this document is a living document. It's not set in stone. Outreach should continue and continue to be creative with how we outreach. You know, I agree, the youth is a huge component and should have a voice in their future. I've always believed in that. But I think that we can no longer continue to put things aside and not take a vote on it. We can continue to do this and it won't please everyone. You know, it's a document to guide the city. It's not to cure all the deficiencies we have in our city. There's going to be opportunities to take care of open space, take care of more affordable housing. We've, unfortunately, we have, well, fortunately, we've met our numbers when it comes to affordable housing. Do we need more? Of course we do. But that comes with responsible development. So I think as a commission, it's our responsibility to try to help move things forward. It doesn't end with us. Council will make the final decision. And we need to remember, this is just a document that has guidelines on how to move our city's future forward and that it can be revised at any time. We don't have to wait thirty-five years to revise it. So therefore, I feel that we should take a vote tonight. Thank you.
Well, we have a motion on the table and a second, so. All right, anybody else at this point in time? Okay, hearing none? We'll do a roll call vote. The motion is to continue, continue this item until a future date is established. And Secretary, do a roll call vote?
Yes, roll call vote. Commissioner Garcia?
I have to say that I am conflicted. On the one hand, I appreciate all the hard work that has gone into this, the past five years. And I feel like, you know, there's, it's time to act. On the other hand, I, I think that we would be remiss if we didn't listen to public comment and address the environmental justice issues. The Attorney General letter that we didn't even get a chance to discuss today fully. So I am very conflicted, but ultimately, I think, I think we have to go with, with the public request that we give them additional time to weigh in on some critical issues. But I do thank staff for all, all the work that has been poured into this proposed plan. It's a very long eye, but it's because I am conflicted. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, well, Secretary, continue on.
Okay, so Commissioner Garcia was aye. Commissioner Morrissey?
Well, I feel likewise. I appreciate the, all the hard work that's gone into this. I, you know, asked a lot of questions because I wanted to make sure all the community's concerns were addressed. And I think my concerns have been addressed. I, the lone concern I have is, is ensuring that we have enough open space. So, and balancing that with the desire of the community, I think I have to vote to continue it. So it's aye.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Nguyen?
The general plan update is long overdue and, and a lot of people have worked very hard for the last five years as well. The two, over two million dollar has spent to, for the general plan update. I, I have to vote no. I'd like to make the decision as soon as possible. So the general plan could be modified and changed along the way, but, you know, the decision must be made. And also, you know, the ultimate decision would be the city council, not the planning commissioner.
Thank you for referring to Nguyen. I have a no. Commissioner Rivera?
Yes. Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Fan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras? Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
No.
Chair McLaughlin?
As it was said before with everybody else, this is a tough decision. The fact is that I think there's, it takes nothing away from the fact that the planning department has done a good job and over the years to put this together. I think there's just a series of disconnects right now. And essentially, we're sitting with, you know, no housing plan right now. We've got environmental justice, which has become a question and all that is associated with it. So at this point in time, I have to say aye at this point for continuation. And it's a matter of also listening to what people have been saying. They, they want more, more of an input if we have to do something. I think we have to set some goals and objectives on that and make it happen from that standpoint. But right now, it appears that I would say at this point in time, I, I need to have this continued. So basically, we have five to two?
Yes, motion, our motion is approved by majority vote with council members, Commissioner Nguyen and Vice Chair Contreras Leo dissenting.
Okay. All right. Do we have anything else at this point in time? We'll say at this point, the issue is closed. And from the standpoint of staff, do you have any staff comments above and beyond all the comments we've had already today?
Sheriff, this is Min Thai. I certainly appreciate the commission's perspective and as staff, we respect your input as well as decision. I just want to say for the staff, who's been working on this for five years, you guys did a good job and I hope that we will continue to be able to demonstrate to the community that we can get this project done. We felt that it was in a good place, but obviously, as I mentioned, we do respect your comments and input and thank you for that. So appreciate it. But I want to say thank you to the staff, Vince, Melanie, Ricardo, and also Bernie, who has been working on this for many years. And to all the staff and the consultant, thank you for all your support today. Thank you.
Thank you, Min. Any other staff members want to make any comments at this point in time?
Chairman McLaughlin, Vince Fargoso here. I'll just make a quick one too. Thank you again for all of you, for all your work. The general plan is gonna go on for a few months, but my term here won't. I've decided to retire at the end of the year. So what I can say, it's been a pleasure working with the planning commission for all these years. I've learned a lot from all of you. I appreciate all your perspective and the time and effort you put into it. And I hope to see you on down the road, maybe on the golf course for a few of you, if you golf. But anyway, so it's been, it's been a wonderful ride and it's time to let some of these young guns behind me, who I've got a great, great bench behind me, a great team, and they're gonna step up and just continue to do the great work you expect. So thank you and I appreciate all of it. And so the fourteenth will be our last meeting together, so thank you very much.
Thanks Vince, we appreciate you. We'll go, I'll go through, anybody else want to make a comment from staff?
Yes, this is Lisa.
Okay Lisa, please do.
I'm also, I'm also signing out at the end of the year. So I wanted to tell you all, I appreciate working with y'all. It's been great and I appreciate all your hard work and I hope you continue to do your good work. Thank you very much.
Wow. Any more surprises?
It's not the general plan, trust me, it's just time.
There you go.
I won't miss those midnight meetings, though, I can be honest with you.
Like this?
Like this one, yes, like this one.
No, we appreciate all of your consideration, everything that you all put into this, all your review of all the documents. It's very much appreciated for the community.
Absolutely.
Yep, yep, I agree. Do we have any comments from the Commissioner, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes, Vince, Lisa, I'm, I'm speechless, which by now you know that's hard to achieve. But, I mean, thank you, you've made my year very, much more enjoyable. Thank you for working with me and working through all my, you know, educating me through the process. I really appreciated all of your guidance, so thank you. And I'm, I'm very surprised, but congratulations to both of you. Retirement is something I think that I'd certainly look forward to, so congratulations.
You've got a long time to wait for that one.
I don't know.
Okay. Commissioner Morrissey?
No, I don't have any further comments. Congratulations to Lisa and Vince for, on their retirement. Could miss having Vince around, but wish you well. And that's, that's all the comments I have for today.
Thank you. Okay.
Thanks everybody for your patience.
Commissioner Nguyen?
First, I was at the, my term will be end, the end of twenty twenty. Maybe this is my last term. I served at the G S N A for, I guess, been serving for the last sixteen years. Just follow Vincent for playing golf with him. Maybe I pick up golf to play with Vincent. You know, the, you know, and also would congratulate to the councilwoman-elect, Thai the fan, to the representative who won. I guess it's, will be, December will be my last meeting with the planning commission as well. It's, I've been very pleasure to work with every one of you. Looking forward to seeing each other, you know, in the, in the city.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
Yes, first and foremost, I'd like to say congratulations on your retirement to Vince and Lisa. Hope you guys enjoy it, it should be fun. Golf sounds cool. I have a long time, so we'll, we'll see. But also, I also would like to congratulate Councilwoman Thai. And I'd also like to thank staff for all the work they did today. I know it was a long one and I, I know it's been a lot of work, so just thank you, staff.
Commissioner Fan?
Hi Chair. Vince and Lisa, I am simultaneously happy and excited for you and a bit jealous, even though I'm a millennial and have a long way to go. But, you know, Vince, I just want to say that I believe you were the first Santa planner I ever met. And, you know, I'm sad to see you go. And, you know, you and Lisa, I've sent many emails, asking questions, and you've both always been very responsive, so I really appreciate that. I wish you the best of luck, steps of your journey. And to my colleagues for unofficial congratulations. I'm sure we'll all be worked together the next meetings and in the future, so. But thank you to everyone. And congrats again.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
Yes.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Well, I've known Vince for quite some time. So I, I say congratulations, but I, I hope it's, you know, not the last time we, we see you around. So I, I wish you the best. I'm sure your wife is excited for you to, you know, join her in retirement and I hope that you travel and enjoy life. Lisa, thank you so much for your words of guidance and bringing us back to where we need to be so many times and you will be missed as well. And I agree with Felix, not only would I like to congratulate Councilwoman-elect Fan, but to all those that, that took that step and stepped up to run for office, I have a much more humble perspective of that. I've always been on the other side and now to have been on that side. I've always been on the other side, and now to have been on that side, it is a humbling experience, so I congratulate everyone that that ran, and um, and you know, uh it's it's awesome that that people do decide that they want to give it a different level, so congratulations of Fan.
Okay, well, um, first of all, again, uh I'll just say, Min, thanks for the presentation this evening. I know a lot of work has gone into that. Um, Melanie, you did a great job on the elements, um, uh I've I've gone through those in in depth, and and there's a lot of information there, um, and I appreciate all your efforts on that, as well as everybody else in staff that's been involved with the general plan over the next, over the last three or four years. I think um basically, uh the direction we're taking for somewhat of a, put it on hold until we get transitions with the new council, and we get transition with several uh several other groups, um and I think we get some information further disc uh discussed between uh the the residents and and staff. I think all of that should come together at the beginning of the next year, and hopefully we'll be in better situation than we are today with the COVID. Um, Vince, sorry to hear, and you you've you've done a great job. I know we've, I've I've enjoyed working with you over the years. It's been a lot of fun. Uh, you've been a great help, um you've been very supportive of the things that we've been doing, and very open to let us know what's what's coming down the pipe and what we need to be aware of. Um, Lisi, you kept us out, you kept me out of trouble at least. Uh, I think you kept some other people out of trouble too, so I appreciate everything you've done, and and um it's a, it's it's been a pleasure working with you over the years, and um I just uh hope you're the best in your next chapter in life. Um, Vince, we will be on the golf course, we will get to play. Um, but again, thanks for everybody for the time. This is a, this is a long session, we expected it to be a long session, and I think um, I think at this point in time, we can put this project into the hands of the new council that's coming in, and um I think that it'll be a good thing for us to close on this. Some of us may or may not be reviewing it in the future, but at this point in time, thank you for everything you guys done, and and again, I'll I'll say the same thing, Fan. Um, congratulations on your election, um and whatever we can do to help you, we'd be more than happy to reach out and help you. Um, with that, meeting is adjourned, it's about eleven thirty, and I appreciate everybody's time and effort uh tonight and patience. We will uh be reconvening for our last meeting. We will not have a meeting in November, and we won't have another meeting in November. Um, we will have a meeting on the fourteenth of December, and that will be our last meeting for the year. So um with that said, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.